How, if at all, to regulate these billboards? What rules ought to pertain to them?
Addressing the matter of local control, Council President Eric Garcetti says that the changing nature of billboards has been troubling, and talks about the proposed federal studies.
To say we should never give up local control on anything, go through civil rights, go through environmental law, go through fair housing laws, go through gun control. The idea that somehow seeding local law is always the best, just as a universal principle, I think is a flawed way of looking at things. We wouldn't have the clean water laws that we have today were it just given to local control. We saw that with Prop. O and other things in which we had those requirements. We wouldn't have fair housing right now were it not with state and federal legislation. That said, I think what we have here today is something in which we can actually work together on this. And I would urge my colleagues to support Mr. Fuhr's legislation.
Seeking clarification on a particular point of the legislation, District 3 Councilmember Dennis Zine has a question for Assemblyman Fuhr about existing billboards.
This only deals with the digital billboards. They're concerned, and maybe it's because of the planning department or something else, they were talking about standing structures where the signs on standing structures, the name of the building, would have to be reduced to qualify and to conform with this. So, to make it clear, this only deals with digital billboards that are being established throughout the city. Correct, Mr. Fuhr? You are the expert. You can come to the table. You're an old folk here. You've been around here a while.
That's correct, Mr. Zine.
So, with the existing that we have going up, now I know I have two in my district, and they seem to be, wake up one morning and all of a sudden they're there. Will this address the current billboards, digital billboards, and the 800 and some that they plan to put up over the next few years?
The answer to that two-part question is different. With regard to the existing billboards, this legislation would take effect next year, so it would not have an impact on the existing billboards.
So if they rush and get all these billboards up, we won't have any impact on them?
That, this legislation can't control what happens before its effective date. It would be up to local jurisdictions like Los Angeles to assert local control.
After considering several amendments to the resolution, your Los Angeles City Council is prepared to vote on Item 47.
Okay. If those are accepted as friendly, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, four noes.
Okay, that passes.
Speaking about the pending conversion to digital television in Los Angeles and the nation, District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas welcomes FCC Commissioner Jonathan Edelstein, who talks about snow in Los Angeles.
...fact that February 17th was a very ominous date across the country, and that apparently the city of Los Angeles, even though these broadcasters can in fact convert, can convert on the 17th of February, Los Angeles seems to be in a unique situation there. And if you could tell us a little bit about that, and also please introduce yourself, and if you could share with us what the relevancy of the FCC is, it's very relevant, what the relevancy of the SEC is, and maybe give us some examples of the kinds of things that we deal with on a regular basis, on a day-to-day basis here locally, that the FCC has responsibility and jurisdiction over.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Cardenas. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to make this presentation. I certainly appreciate your leadership on this issue, which is so important in Los Angeles. The FCC, I am a commissioner of the FCC, have been confirmed twice by United States Senate. There's three of us left on the FCC. We oversee all of the wireline, wireless, and media communications in the United States. An example, I guess, that you debated last week was the cable franchising issue regarding AT&amp;T's provision of PEG access over U-verse. We have some authority over that, a lot of it we delegate to the states by federal law, but we set some of the broad parameters that unfortunately led to the situation that you are having to deal with, with inadequate service for digital, for the PEG access channels here. As you know, there's been a lot of attention on the digital transition lately, and you've seen that it's been delayed from February 17th until now June 12th. It's a good thing for Los Angeles, is what I can tell you, because this city was not ready to go. And the United States was not ready to go. We weren't ready for prime time. The issue should be a non-event. If we all did our jobs and it was smooth, we wouldn't hear a lot about it. But because it's been so poorly managed by the previous administration, we had the potential of hundreds of thousands of people waking up in Los Angeles and finding snow, not on the ground, but on their TVs. I don't know what would alarm them more here. Certainly, we have to worry because there's serious issues here. It's not just about entertainment, it's about emergency information, particularly with all the dangers, man-made and natural, that face you here in Los Angeles, but also the democracy itself and all the information that goes out over the airwaves, of which there should be much more, as Councilman Rosendahl has fought so hard over his career to ensure that in fact there is more democracy over the airwaves. I've tried to fight for that in my minority position on the FCC, and now I'm thrilled to be in the majority, thanks to the ascension of President Obama. We are going to bring attention to that. We're going to make sure that the PEG access issue you're concerned about is dealt with in an appropriate way on our level. But what here I want to talk about is this DTV transition, and what we can do in Los Angeles to make your lives easier for your constituents. This refers to the migration from analog to digital technology. It, all analog broadcasting for major broadcasters is going to cease on June 12th. What's significant about this is that, is that despite the delay, we allowed stations to go early if they wanted to, on February 17th when they were supposed to go. We learned last night, based on information that we were requesting from broadcasters, that every broadcaster in LA is going to wait until June 12th, which is a great relief, because I think it would cause some confusion if some were going and some weren't. So I'm pleased with that development. This digital transition means that local broadcasting stations can provide a lot of good things to constituents. It's a more efficient type of technology. So you can, with that same space you used to have one channel, now there's space for four or five TV channels. Maybe it'd be nice if they would dedicate some to local elected officials and to issues confronting the community and democracy. We, the FCC, have responsibility to make sure that happens, and I think we will, work in that direction.
Thanking his colleague, Tony Cardenas, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl also welcomes FCC Commissioner Jonathan Edelstein, and asks for a look at the future.
And now, what do you see as the FCC's role when it comes to this whole First Amendment business?
Well, you know, in terms of content regulation, the FCC is highly restricted in terms of what we can do under the First Amendment, but we have an obligation to ensure that broadcasters are functioning in the public interest. That's our charge on the FCC. I'm afraid that we haven't lived up to our mandate from Congress to do that. We need to have public interest obligations on new digital broadcasting. We talk about these additional channels that all of your viewers can see. You're going from 13 channels here in LA to 55. What's going to be on those additional channels? What's going to be on those that are relevant to the city, to the democracy, to the issues that voters will have to deal with when they go to the polls? A study from right here in Los Angeles, from Marty Kaplan at University of Southern California, found that there's a virtual blackout of any coverage of state and local and municipal affairs in television news nationwide, not just here in LA. If it bleeds, it leads, is all you see, and there's enough bleeding to be leading here in LA. There's not a lot of room for what is the city council doing? But what really impacts the lives of the people in LA? Is it somebody got murdered in one part of town? Or is it what you're doing here every day did affect how this city develops?
The big question of the day was asked by District 3 Councilmember Dennis Zine, and that question was about paying for the digital converters, and the availability of coupons to defray the cost of those converters.
On the issue of the coupons that have been given out, a number of people got those coupons, and they didn't know there was an expiration date on it.
That's right.
Is there any way to have that extended for those folks that have it, that didn't think there was an expiration and were trying to make arrangements to get that purchase and save that $40?
I actually have a good answer on that. Yes, there is. It was just a change made in law. The very same bill that moved the deadline from February 17th to June 12th allowed consumers to apply for one additional coupon. Initially, they were allowed to apply for two, but if either one expired before they used it, they can apply for an additional coupon. Right now, as I indicated, there's a waiting list, but I'm encouraging people to go ahead and apply right now, because that waiting list is growing every day.
But is there any, is there any way, the expired coupons, since they haven't redeemed them, to have those validated so they will be able to redeem those?
I've been told by the Department of Commerce that there isn't, that they're going to have to issue a new one and go through this whole rigmarole. I think the whole system, which was designed to prevent fraud, has really been kind of inadequate to the task. I mean, if it was all electronic, and they gave the information to the retailers directly, and it was on a big database, we could have done that. But they decided to avoid fraud. They would go through this, you know, elaborate thing of cards and mail these out. They mailed them out third class, so a lot of people didn't get them for a month, and they only have 90 days on them, so they didn't have much time to buy them. They didn't notice there's this little tiny thing here that says it expires at the bottom. Who would look at that? So, it was really, like I say, a mismanaged program. At least we have a chance now for people to reapply. So they should do that immediately, because if they get on this waiting list, we're going to work people off the waiting list in order that they got on. So it's urgent that people apply now, even though they might have heard that there's no money in the program, because Congress will probably restore funding in the stimulus package.
Joining us now by phone is District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas, welcome back to Council Week in Review.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Another busy week in council chambers. You were one of the four no votes for support of that state bill that would ban construction of any new digital billboards. This doesn't in any way say you're in favor of the expansion of digital billboards, does it?
No, not at all. What my concern was is local control. Anytime the state legislature tries to do something, a lot of times they probably should be using a scalpel, and they tend to use a butcher knife. And what they're talking about here, one of the first things that I noted when I was reading the state legislation by Mr. Fuhr, Assemblyman Fuhr, is that it said that they would ban billboards that are visible from highways. Well, for example, in my district, if you go over one of the overpasses, you can see every corner of the San Fernando Valley as you're driving on that freeway. So does that mean if an electronic billboard is two miles off of the freeway, but if it's visible, is it going to be affected by that? That is the control and the jurisdiction of the local planning authority, which in this case would be the city of Los Angeles. We wouldn't be able to even discuss that billboard at all, good, bad, or otherwise.
Another point of discussion, of course, is about the length of the ban, a two-year ban, to some scenes a little lengthy, not very business-friendly. Shouldn't we be able to come to a consensus in less than that much time, beneficial to both residents and business?
Yeah, I think so. One of the reasons why Fuhr is even running this assembly bill is he's telling us that the federal government feels that it's time that they get some results from some studies as to whether or not it affects people's driving or it's detrimental to people being able to be safe on the streets and on our highways. And yet, at the same time, he's not sure when that study's going to be done. And one of the questions that I asked in council was, have you ever heard of the federal government saying that they're going to come out with some study results, say in the next six to 12 months, and it might take a year, or two, or three, or they never finish that study? And he had to admit that he has, he has known that to happen. So that being the case, he could be talking about having a ban for two years, and oops, the federal government still hasn't given the answers to their studies, and then run another bill that banned it for another two years.
You mentioned a moment ago, local versus state control. Perhaps one of the fears is that once the state does take control of the billboard issue in general, then the city might have very little to say about what billboards look like, or even where they might be located.
Oh, absolutely. Again, local government is always subjected to state law, so once they pass the state law, our hands are tied. And that's something that I'm always worried about. I'm a former legislator myself, and I can be honest with you and tell you that I wasn't as sensitive back then, having never served on local government. Now that I'm a city council member, and I realize how critical it is to business and the economy that we have the flexibility we need to keep moving the economy forward, every time the state ties our hands, it hurts jobs, it hurts local government, it hurts local communities.
Of course, another point that came up in the discussion around the horseshoe had to do with revenue, that if the state was able to get their hands on control of, for example, you mentioned billboards that can be seen from the freeways, perhaps they could take over the revenue stream as well?
Oh, absolutely. And if you look at the newspapers today and all week, and probably into the next few months, you're going to see that the state of California is in a real dire situation when it comes to the budget. They're cutting public education, they're trying to find revenue anywhere that they can, and believe me, they don't, they don't balk at all at trying to swoop money that normally should go to our local cities and keep it for themselves. So, again, this is something that we have to have our eyes wide open about, and I'm really worried when the state of California says, "Don't worry, we're just doing this for a little while. Don't worry, we won't take your money." Because in the past, when they've said that, they've actually doubled back, and they have taken our money, and they have taken away our jurisdiction.
Listening to the discussion around the council chambers, it occurred to me, as a viewer, that if the state took control, that presumably they would also be responsible for policing illegal billboards, and frankly, I think that's less likely to happen.
Yes, correct. You're absolutely right. Anytime that you have further and further away from home jurisdictions actually taking care of an issue or policing an issue, you have less policing. For example, when it comes to public access channels, things of that nature, we used to have a lot of public access channels here in Los Angeles. We forced the cable companies to actually have that for the public, and we enjoyed one of the most beneficial public access environments in the country. But now that the state of California changed that law, now the state of California is in charge of that, and we've lost almost all of our public access channels, because it is no longer a local jurisdiction issue. Now it's up to the state to enforce, and they're pretty much not enforcing that at all.
We certainly want to get on to that topic in just a moment, but one last question on the billboard topic, which has now gained support of council with you one of four no votes. If it does pass in Sacramento, what's your take on what happens then?
Well, first, it's got to pass through the legislature, and I'm curious, I was talking to one of my colleagues on the floor, and I said, even if the legislature passes it, I wonder if Arnold Schwarzenegger, the governor, would actually sign it, or he would err on the side of saying, "No, it's a local control issue. I shouldn't be allowing the legislature and myself to take control." So it has to pass the legislature and the governor's signature. If it does do that, I think that we're going, our hands are going to be tied, and unfortunately, it's very common for the legislature to, once they get their foot in the door, to actually take control for a longer period, and then forget about the fact that we had the control in the first place.
Got it. Let's go back now to the topic that you brought up about television. Will we all still be able to watch our favorite shows, all the channels, when we make the conversion from analog to digital? And by the way, is digital really going to be that much better?
Well, actually, the reason why they're all going to digital is because it is the way of the future. And when you go to digital signals, what happens is that something called spectrum, and they have an opportunity where maybe they could only have 50 channels. Now they can do as many as 500 channels accessible to a person that has that digital ability in their home. But what the problem that we have right now is, on February 17th, the federal government had required all the television stations that are actually putting out signals to convert to digital. But luckily, they actually postponed that till the middle of June of this year. So we got lucky. Another thing as well is, these private companies actually have the right to go digital as of February 17th anyway. They are going to do that in some parts of the country, but we had the FCC Commissioner Jonathan Edelstein in front of us in city council, and he announced to us that the night before he was talking to us in city council, he got the news that none of the providers of signals in Los Angeles were going to convert to digital on February 17th. So we still have more time, and the person I'm worried about the most is seniors, poor families, low-income families. I'm worried about them, because we have an estimated as many as 100,000 households that still either have the rabbit ears on top of the television, or that little antenna on the top of the roof where they, sometimes they send them up there to kind of turn it in different directions. They don't have cable, they don't have satellite, and those are the people that are going to be at a loss. And the federal government is going to provide for them an opportunity to get at least two vouchers per household. So the first $40 per digital box, conversion box, will actually be covered by the federal government. People need to know that, so we need to get the word out.
Well, and you just brought up a tremendously important point, as you just pointed out, and I heard from an FCC official myself. Los Angeles is the number-one market in the country, believe it or not, for people using antennas and rabbit ears still.
Yeah, I found that out. I thought maybe we're second or third in the country, they say by far. Commissioner Edelstein reminded us that we are the number-one community. Los Angeles has more people who use rabbit ears or the old-fashioned antenna on the roof, and they don't have these other new systems. So we have more people who are in danger of not having signal in their home, and as Commissioner Edelstein said from the FCC when he was before us, he said, "We're not just concerned about people watching television, we're concerned about the emergency broadcasting systems and things of that nature that they won't have access to."
One of the other things that was said, I believe during public comment in council, is that instead of costing $40 or whatever you can get along with the coupon, these converter boxes really ought to be free to the public, and the broadcasters are going to be making money off the advertising, won't they?
Yeah, yes. The broadcasters do make money off the advertising, but at the same time, the federal government, for some reason, has come up with these coupons or vouchers that are free, two per household, and they're going to cover most of the cost of these converters. So maybe between now and then, and June, maybe we'll find that maybe private industry will lower the price from $50, $60 a box down to $40, and just say, "Give us a voucher, we'll give you a box." So that remains to be seen, whether or not anybody's going to have to shell out any dollars out of their pocket in order to keep their old TV set and not have to go out and buy a new one, and then not have to shell out any money to be able to watch their television.
And finally, with 55 new channels, when the conversion does take place, can the city reserve one of these for Channel 35?
Actually, well, that's another battle we're going through. Some of the cable companies are being very good about keeping Channel 35 on Channel 35, but we also have another big company that is coming into the market, and they want to put it on Channel 39, and it's a very complicated process, but we could probably talk about that when it comes to the council in the next three weeks. But it's really important for people to understand that public access is very important, and that's one of the reasons why they're going digital, so that they can have more ability to have more public access, hopefully. But Channel 35 is something that people watch, and it's something that a lot of people enjoy, and it allows people to be informed, not only about what's going on in their government, but also a lot of the programming that is free to the public, and gives them information that they wouldn't otherwise get anywhere else.
Well, thanks for all the great insight. District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you, Jack.
The update on the status of digital television was noted and filed. Now, if you have a question about obtaining a digital converter coupon, go to the dtv.org website, or dial 311, your one call to City Hall for further information. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org, and follow the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending February 13th, 2009. On behalf of Taffy Eason and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, February 18th, 2009. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We meet the first Friday of the month in our Van Nuys City Hall chambers, in our efforts to bring city council meetings closer to all Angelinos, but otherwise, we are here in city council chambers. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, as well as those members of the public that are here in our council chambers, in our Van Nuys city chambers, which remotely broadcast these meetings, and also those who are watching on the internet or listening by phone. All of our meetings are shown live throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35. That's a service of the Information Technology Agency, and rebroadcast each evening as well. At our city's homepage, which is lacity.org, you can also click on live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and we archive all of our past agendas and video footage of our past council meetings online as well. Also at lacity.org is a wealth of information about our elected officials, about our city departments, and about city services that can help improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. We also have a service called Council Phone, which allows you to call the number 213-621-CITY from your telephone to listen to any of our council meetings or our committee meetings. Again, that number is 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those are available here in council chambers, at our city clerk's office, or online at lacity.org. The agendas are split into items for which we've had public hearings in committee, and those that have not yet had public hearings. If a member of the public would like to give comments about any of those items that have not yet received a public hearing, feel free to fill out a speaker card here or in our Van Nuys chambers, and hand that to Sergeant Arms, and we'll make sure to hear your public testimony. Items that already had a public hearing in committee require reopening of that public hearing by a council member. We also have an item for general public comment, which is four items, not on our agenda today, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city council. And if you'd like to be heard for that also, just take a card in the back, fill it out, and put "public comment" in the upper-right corner, and we'll be sure to include your comments. We have two council members that are here. We have a 15-member body, and 2/3, or 10 members constitutes a quorum with which we can begin business. Pursuing to council rules, all council members should be here on time in their seats. So the following council members are now late. If they will make their way down immediately, Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Reyes is excused today, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. Mr. Weiss is also excused today on city business, but we do expect the rest. Thank you to Ms. Perry, who has joined us. We now are at four members. In the meantime, we will wait for those members. If we don't get a quorum by 10:15, we will cancel the meeting for lack of a quorum. Thank you, in the meantime, to everybody for your patience, and we will be back shortly. Thank you to Councilmember Rosendahl. We have five members now. Again, the following council members are late. If they will make their way down, and if the Sergeant Arms can please help assist us in that, Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Smith, and Wesson. It is now 10 minutes after the hour. This will be the second-to-last warning, and then we will cancel the meeting. 10:10 right now. Councilmembers Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Smith, and Wesson are late, and we need you in council chambers. Thank you. Okay, that would take us -- one week would be to the 25th as well. Is there any objection to continuing item 11 to the 25th? If not, so ordered. Mr. Rosendahl? Number 16 for Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas? Number 15. Mr. Weezer?
Seven for Alarcon.
Number seven for Mr. Alarcon. And Mr. Parks? We got it? Okay, got it covered. Let's hold number eight as well. For folks following at home or in the audience, number eight is an ordinance. It only requires a simple majority, or eight votes for most items, but ordinances require 12 members on the first reading. Since we only have 11 members, we'll hold that until a 12th member arrives. We're still awaiting Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Gruel, and Ms. Hahn, if they will please join us, so we can take that up. Let's call number eight special as well, pending 12 members. That leaves the balance of the items from that section 6 through 18. If there are no other special items, let's take up the rest of them on consent. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 19 through 33, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have cards from the public on any of those?
Yes, there are cards on 19, 20, 23, 24, 25, 30, 32, and 33.
Okay, we will call those special for cards from the public. We'll open and close the other specials. Mr. -- I mean, 21 for Mr. Rosendahl. Other specials, colleagues?
Bill.
Mr. Weezer?
Yes, 24 for amendment, and 28 for Ms. Hahn.
Okay. 28, we'll call special for Ms. Hahn, and number 24, Mr. Weezer for an amendment. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's take the balance. Yes, Ms. Perry?
We just received a complaint on item 33, so I suppose -- well, it's selected, but I guess we should continue it, so we have a chance to go back to committee and discuss it there.
Okay, like to continue it until Friday's meeting, or?
Do you wish to continue it or refer it to HCD Committee?
Revert it to HCD Committee.
Okay, there's no objection. We'll send item 33 to our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee. Okay. Without objections, so ordered. If we can take up the balance of the items now?
At-Hot Committee on Homelessness for that one.
Okay, we can cross-refer, but let's get it to HCD first, because that's where the jurisdiction is. Okay. Please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved as well. Next item, please.
Next item on the continuation agenda is item number 34, and that's an item for which -- excuse me, an item noticed for public hearing, and I believe there is a card on it.
Okay, let's go ahead and call that special for a card from the public, and that will take us to -- next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 35 through 37.
I believe Ms. Gruel called 35 special yesterday, so we'll call that special for her. And other specials, 36 or 37? Mr. Labange?
Thank you.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay. We'll call those special for Mr. Labange. And next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 38 -- excuse me, have not been held, 38 and 39.
Okay, we have a card from the public on 38. We'll call that special. 39, we do not have a card, so we'll close the public hearing on that. Anybody wishing to call 39 special? Okay, Mr. Zine on item number 39. Okay. Again, we're still waiting. Councilmembers Alarcon, Gruel, and Hahn, if they'll please join us as soon as possible. I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks for a recognition of some special guests that we have in chambers as well. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to acknowledge Executive Secretary Biacha of the African Synergy, who's visiting us with a delegation representing 22 African countries. They're here to make final preparations for the African First Ladies Health Summit to be held by the U.S. Doctors of Africa. Many of us remember, we honored the U.S. Doctors here in council about a year or so ago. This conference will be held April 20th in the city of L.A., and their primary interest in this conference will be health issues dealing with primarily women and young girls with the accent on HIV/AIDS issues. I'd just like to welcome you to the city council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. We will go to our general public comment now, which is, again, for items that are not on our agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. Two minutes per speaker, and there's a clock at the podium to help guide your time. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker, and after that will be Olga Hall. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Clyde Williams. I'm resident, 4115 Barrett Road and CD 14, Southwest Museum. Seventeen neighborhood councils in northeast L.A. have supported the Southwest Museum as a museum for northeast L.A. and all of L.A. City. It's the first museum for L.A. And the Autry National Center has kept it closed for several years, and most of the children in northeast L.A., about half a generation, have not had the experience that most of the neighborhood council members have had. Half a generation without any exposure to the Southwest Museum. The Autry National Center has already moved the Braun Library to the Griffith Parks. They want to move the rest of the collection to Griffith Parks. In fact, they have named one of the exhibit galleries as the Southwest Museum, so that by the letter of the law, you might say, they will preserve the Southwest Museum, but not in northeast L.A. Maybe they don't like northeast L.A. for some reason. We would strongly support having ANC declared in default of their lease agreement with the city of L.A. They have not complied with any of the lease agreement conditions and terms. They have not submitted the reports that they are supposed to have submitted for 20 years, not even $20 for the $1 a year lease. They have also not fulfilled any of the merger agreements with the Southwest Museum. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Olga Hall is our next speaker. After that will be Lucille Caruso.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Councilman Weezer talks about what he wants his legacy to be. Yesterday, I heard him talk on Channel 35, and through other avenues, I hear the same message. He wants to rebuild, he wants to be brought -- bring back the history of Los Angeles. He wants to protect the industrial area in his district along Los Angeles River. He wants to rebuild the stores on Broadway. He talks about bringing back Angels Flight. He wants to bring back the history of this city, and yet, he fails to mention the Southwest Museum. How is it possible that he mentions all these other places and not the Southwest Museum? It is in his district. The Southwest Museum is a very special place, and I repeat, very special. It is a jewel in this city with great history, and must be saved and protected for future generations. This is the legacy he needs to talk about and not repeat the Autry's agenda. Will Councilman Weezer -- Jose Weezer's historical legacy read in the news as the traitor of the northeast community? Will he read as the councilman that helped the Autry Museum rob the Native American collection from the Southwest Museum? Will he allow the Autry to destroy the very basic purpose of the Southwest Museum? Is this the legacy he wants to leave, not only to the city, but to his own children? A shameful legacy? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Our next speaker is Lucille Caruso. And after that is Chuck Tennan.
Good morning.
Good morning. What I wanted to discuss today a little bit was about these street vendors that people -- I've been reading in the paper, how some people have a tendency to complain about people who sell hot dogs or whatever it is on corners. But a lot of these items are novelty that you really can't get somewhere, like a type of a hot dog that if I was back home, I couldn't even get that flavor or taste of a hot dog, and about certain licenses, and I don't think there's a competition, but I mean, certainly big businesses can work with the small business to maybe make a partnership. But back in my party days, in drinking -- I mean, I was hungry when I got out of a bar or whatever, but usually, the bars would say, after last call for alcohol, "Meet us at this place," which I'm surprised you don't have a 4 o'clock bar license, considering the volume that Hollywood Boulevard is generating business-wise. But it's more to identify where these people are coming for that hunger, that perhaps a business to eat at those locations need to be, you know, looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Chuck Tennan is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
Council President Garcetti and council members, our state is in sad shape. Our state treats people like toys. The budget crisis is a game of money, of who gets what and why, and the people didn't cause it. I wonder, when it's all sorted out, how much the state is going to fund our city for much-needed housing, stopping foreclosures, and the loss of affordable housing. It reminds me of a realistic computer game called SimCity that takes a genius to play it. You start by developing and building a city from nothing, from the land. You build, you develop, you make good decisions, you manage it, and you promote healthy growth. Or, if you're not careful, you have a financial meltdown, the people scream at you, and you lose it all. It deals with a financial balance, which is the key to a healthy existence and growth of a city that our state desperately needs. Some kind of solution to put us back on track, or we'll sink. Noah had the right idea. He built an ark when he saw a disaster coming, packed up, sailed away to a safer place to avoid drowning. Look at history, empires that failed and changes that replaced them. Don't allow what's happening to our state to happen to the city and then blame them. We need to protect our trade, our commerce, and our tourism to exist, and find ways to overcome the economic crisis and not allow it to swallow us up. Compromise is a good start, a unified plan. You give to get, not take, but do something. The Marine Life Protection Act is going to close down 1,100 miles of our coastline. Governor Arnold put a freeze on it because the state had no money, but private funding is bailing them out, and we're going to face the loss of $100 million in local economy. San Pedro and the port, you're going to be hit hard. And remember, to stop the violence, we can all live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tennan, and we are eagerly awaiting the speech from President Obama today, or the details of the housing package, and we'll be looking at that closely with you. I've been asked to remind the Government 101 folks that their breakout workshops are going to begin now, so if you want to begin to get up and go towards the back of the audience.
Can I wait till that's done, then?
Hold on one second, Mr. Dog. They'll be able to hear you. I know you like an audience. Don't worry, they'll hear you. Folks, if you can go, we're
Two minutes per speaker, and there's a clock at the podium to help guide your time. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker. And after that will be Olga Hall. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Clyde Williams. I'm resident four-one-one-five Barrett Road and CD fourteen Southwest Museum. Seventeen neighborhood councils in northeast L.A. have supported the Southwest Museum as a museum for northeast L.A. and all of L.A. City. It's the first museum for L.A. And the Autry National Center has kept it closed for several years. And most of the children in northeast L.A., about half a generation, have not had the experience that most of the neighborhood council members have had. Half a generation without any exposure to the Southwest Museum. The Autry National Center has already moved the Braun Library to the Griffith Parks. They want to move the rest of the collection to Griffith Parks. In fact, they have named one of the exhibit galleries as the Southwest Museum, so that by the letter of the law, you might say, they will preserve the Southwest Museum, but not in northeast L.A. Maybe they don't like northeast L.A. for some reason. We would strongly support having A and C declared in default of their lease agreement with the city of L.A. They have not complied with any of the lease agreement conditions and terms. They have not submitted the reports that they are supposed to have submitted for twenty years, not even twenty dollars for the one dollar a year lease. They have also not fulfilled any of the merger agreements with the Southwest Museum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Olga Hall is our next speaker. After that will be Lucille Caruso.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. Councilman Wizard talks about what he wants his legacy to be. Yesterday, I heard him talk on Channel thirty-five, and through other avenues, I hear the same message. He wants to rebuild, he wants to be back, bring back the history of Los Angeles. He wants to protect the industrial area in his district along Los Angeles River. He wants to rebuild these stores on Broadway. He talks about bringing back Angels Flight. He wants to bring back the history of this city, and yet, he fails to mention the Southwest Museum. How is it possible that he mentions all these other places and not the Southwest Museum? It is in his district. The Southwest Museum is a very special place, and I repeat, very special. It is a jewel in this city with great history, and must be saved and protected for future generations. This is the legacy he needs to talk about and not repeat the Autry's agenda. Will Councilman Jose Wizard's historical legacy read in the news as the traitor of the northeast community? Will it read as the councilman that helped the Autry Museum rob the Native American collection from the Southwest Museum? Will he allow the Autry to destroy the very basic purpose of the Southwest Museum? Is this the legacy he wants to leave, not only to this city, but to his own children? A shameful legacy? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Our next speaker is Lucille Caruso. And after that is Chuck Tennant. Good morning.
Good morning. What I wanted to discuss today a little bit was about these street vendors that people, I've been reading in the paper, how some people have a tendency to complain about people who sell hot dogs or whatever it is on corners. But a lot of these items are novelty that you really can't get somewhere, like a type of a hot dog that if I was back home, I couldn't even get that flavor or taste of a hot dog, and about certain licenses. And I don't think there's a competition, but I mean, certainly, big businesses can work with the small business to maybe make a partnership. But back in my party days, and drinking, I mean, I was hungry when I got out of a bar or whatever. But usually, the bars would say, after last call for alcohol, meet us at this place, which I'm surprised you don't have a four o'clock bar license, considering the volume that Hollywood Boulevard is generating business-wise. But it's more to identify where these people are coming for that hunger, that perhaps a business to eat at those locations need to be, you know, looked into. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso. Chuck Tennant is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
Council President Garcetti and council members, our state is in sad shape. Our state treats people like toys. The budget crisis is a game of money, of who gets what and why, and the people didn't cause it. I wonder, when it's all sorted out, how much the state is going to fund our city for much-needed housing, stopping foreclosures, and the loss of affordable housing. It reminds me of a realistic computer game called SimCity that takes a genius to play it. You start by developing and building a city from nothing, from the land. You build, you develop, you make good decisions, you manage it, and you promote healthy growth. Or if you're not careful, you have a financial meltdown, the people scream at you, and you lose it all. It deals with a financial balance, which is the key to a healthy existence and growth of a city that our state desperately needs. Some kind of solution to put us back on track, or we'll sink. Noah had the right idea. He built an ark when he saw a disaster coming, packed up, sailed away to a safer place to avoid drowning. Look at history, empires that failed and changes that replaced them. Don't allow what's happening to our state to happen to the city and then blame them. We need to protect our trade, our commerce, and our tourism to exist, and find ways to overcome the economic crisis and not allow it to swallow us up. Compromise is a good start, a unified plan. You give to get, not take, but do something. The Marine Life Protection Act is going to close down eleven hundred miles of our coastline. Governor Arnold put a freeze on it because the state had no money. But private funding is bailing them out. And we're going to face the loss of a hundred million dollars in local economy. San Pedro and the port, you're going to be hit hard. And remember, to stop the violence, we can all live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tennant. And we are eagerly awaiting the speech from President Obama today, or the details of the housing package, and we'll be looking at that closely with you. I've been asked to remind the Government 101 folks that their breakout workshops are going to begin now, so if you want to begin to get up and go towards the back of the
Can I wait till that's done then?
Hold on one second, Mr. Dog. They'll be able to hear you. I know you like an audience. Don't worry, they'll hear you. Folks, if you can go, we're going to start the breakout workshops as Mr. Dog begins his comments. Thank you very much.
Or you could choose to stay and listen to a little democracy in action here. My name's Zuma Dog, candidate for mayor. I have a lot of things to talk about today, but you know, sometimes everything changes because it's been about three years since I've been here. Yes, let's call it the three-year anniversary. I came here over Venice Beach, saying that ordinance forty-two fifteen is unconstitutional. Today, we have Michael Hunt. Yes, Michael Hunt, we know him as Mike. He's here today. He will be costing the city half a million dollars because of the ordinance forty-two fifteen. A federal jury did award Mr. Hunt a quarter of a million, plus a quarter of a million attorney fees. And you know what? It just goes to show, the city runs around and tries to get away with everything in violation of the law. And let's get into why Zuma Dog wants to be mayor of Los Angeles. Because I came here over that ordinance, told you that you're doing all kinds of illegal things that are going to get sued for. And basically, yes, you have to sue the city to get your way. But they know most people can't, and that's how they win. But here we have a case of somebody who did sue. And also, they say, Zuma Dog, they always ask me, what distinguishes you from the other candidates? I have been trained under the fourteen points of Dr. Deming. So I'm the only candidate, including the mayor, that actually has a plan in which to achieve the goal of improving efficiency and reducing the immeasurable waste. I'm here to say, if, 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 let's say this is a house, and we're trying to heat the house, where all the windows are open. And so you keep cranking up the heat, and it costs more money to crank up more heat, and you can't get the house heated because you got all the windows open. So my fourteen-point plan, Zuma Dog, first day, boom, shut the windows by implementing these fourteen points. Something else I'm very, very concerned about, and I won't do names this time, after this, we will be using names. Neighborhood council infiltrated by city council staff members who sit on the boards of other neighborhood councils. I'm hearing it's becoming very vindictive, very thuggish, very disruptive, and the city and the community will not take it. And please look into it, Mr. Council President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. We'll go to the San Fernando Valley for Rick Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning. This is regarding change, you know? I just don't understand why every government agency or whatever has to turn around and run on a percentage for raises. I hate to say the real world, the people are out jobs and so forth. We get an hourly wage, we get paid, if you get a dollar an hour pay, or two dollars an hour pay on a three-year package or whatever, that's what happens out there. But can you imagine, if you're making a hundred thousand dollars a year, and you turn around and get a six percent raise, that is six thousand dollar a raise that you people get? Okay, let's go to if you make fifty thousand dollars, and that's even below average. You are, look at the ways that you are getting a three thousand dollar a year wage. And you wonder why the city is going the way it is and all the branches, that the amount of money that people are making on a percentage wage. I don't know why this thing has to happen this way. It's just beyond me why that, that, that it has to be a percentage. The, the, down on the bottom, you barely get it, and up on top, it's just unbelievable. And then going about the changes, the council, I hate to say it, but every one of you people need to be replaced. Because you're not doing anything for the people. Every time we turn around, it's gimme, 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 it's all you want. You just want, you're like a bunch of little kids, you always want everybody to give you something. And you don't have no plan. Every time you read something, it turns around, it costs the average person more money. And like Wendy Gruel wants to be controller. But the problem is, she's just with the rest of your group. I'm sorry to say, Wendy, but you haven't voted against anything. Look at what it's costing the state of California, five million dollars for the illegals, and this is sanctuary city. But I don't see any of you people going against this and trying to clean this thing up. You just keep wanting to bring them more. And it's free housing, it has to stop too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sean Murph. Sean Murph?
Good morning, Madam President and City Council. I have a couple of flyers that I want to give you. If the Sergeant Hons would take it from me, please. It's, it's our upcoming March for Life, for the Knights of Columbus, March fourteenth. Venice Council is going to host it. It's going to be at Encino. We're going to walk from Encino to, Encino to Mission Hills. That's March fourteenth, it's a Saturday. I encourage the council members wearing the Knights of Columbus, please come out and walk with us. It's for, against abortion. It's, that's what that flyer is for. I would suggest you make copies of it and give it to your Knights of Columbus in your area. Also, I want to talk about the red line. I wrote on the red line this morning, and it was almost thirty minutes late. That's, that's unacceptable because the door didn't work. And the driver kept starting it and starting it and starting it, like they didn't know what they were doing. They had, MTA, please fix that. And whoever is the new mayor, I wish them well. I have a question for you. Who's going to, if Wendy wins city controller, who's going to run my district, District Two? I hope somebody good will run District Two. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Recently, there's been a fiasco, if you haven't read about it in the newspaper, regarding County USC, County USC Hospital that just opened up in the east side, and the heliport, and the helipad that is no longer being used because it was built with the air intake shafts right by the helipad against sane construction advice. So my question is, and you had an item on your agenda on Wednesday regarding the police headquarters, does it also have a helipad associated with it? And is that helipad also built next to the air intake valve, air intake exhaust system, so that when the helicopters land, all the, the fumes from the helicopters will be sucked into the building and, and affect the operations? I'd like to also talk a second on digital TV. This article is in yesterday, Tuesday's newspaper. The switch to digital broadcast will free up valuable airways for public safety officials to improve their communication networks and for wireless companies to offer new services. There's your answer as why we have no more public access, so that the TV channels can be used for internet services by Time Warner, by Verizon. By the way, Verizon, will they have any kind of production facilities located in L.A.? I don't think so, because it's a telephone company. They don't have to come up with the property to do any kind of broadcasting. Vote for Measure B? No. Vote for change. Measure B is a fiasco. Thank you again.
Our next speaker is Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, council members. I first came here in two thousand and five regarding a forty-two fifteen issue in common. I prevailed in two thousand and four and two thousand and five based on the ordinance that was unconstitutional and vague. I brought that to you guys' attention and tried to mitigate that through the city council and through all of my colleagues like Matt Dowd and Zuma Dog. At this time, we prevailed in our first jury trial, which was part of Black History Month on February sixth. The struggles still continue for two thousand and six, or the two thousand and six ordinance that we need to prevail or to come to some kind of mitigation. I'm going to quote Jack Weiss on this. I'm a First Amendment expert, and if you say that I'm a First Amendment expert, you can go by the federal court trial. Now, Mr. Weiss, as our new city attorney, I hope that you would mitigate with me and Steve Rhodey for the two thousand and six ordinance, and it won't end up in a jury trial in the Ninth Circuit. The second thing is that my First Amendment, Mr. Rose, could you please listen to, my First Amendment right is not
Madam President, the speaker should be addressing the whole council.
Okay, well, the whole council, but it's his district. But my First Amendment right is not a lottery. You need to abolish the lottery system and go back to first come and first served. Believe that to be true, and believe that to be constitutional right of the people of Los Angeles. Venice Beach is a distinguished consequential form of free speech and called the free speech zone. So on that note, I hope that my council guys listening abolish the lottery, and let's get back to our First Amendment rights.
Our next speaker is Michael Carrion.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. And once again, I was here, I was cut off yesterday about my comments. Yet, Mr. Labange doesn't seem to have a problem when the city attorney runs around these chambers using the same language, or worse. So I, I was told that the parking was on the agenda yesterday for the police department. If we can turn around and have a no par, a fire zone, no smoking in the parks, why can't this city do something about the illegal parking just as fast? I'll tell you why, because they don't want to. They don't care. President Obama stated that we need change. I think it is time to have some change around here. It's time to have somebody who's going to suit up and show up to City Hall. I stated this before. I voted for Mr. Villarreal, but I will not vote for him again. I seriously am looking at Zuma Dog for mayor. That's the change we need. Maybe he'll come to the city council, and when he sees everybody here carrying on conversations, he'll get them to listen. Think about this for a second. I would like for everybody to think one second. Mr. Zuma Dog will be the next mayor, and he'll be your boss. Wow. Mr. Weiss showed up today. It's going to rain. So I just like to know where we're at on this. We sit here, you guys come to us and ask to be elected, we pick you, and then you don't even care what we have to say. Okay? If we're not donating to your cause large sums, you don't listen to what we have to say. So we come here on public comment and speak over and over, and sometimes we irritate you. And if we do, then we know you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr., or Madam Clerk, I understand that on item number three, Ms. Gruel would like to reconsider that and continue that till Friday, so without objection, can we go ahead and take care of that now?
Do you wish to take a vote on reconsideration?
Yeah, you can open the roll, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have to vote on the item itself to send it back, or to continue it to Friday?
That can be a unanimous vote, if you wish.
Okay, without objection. Okay, thank you. What's the next item?
Madam President, item number eight was being held for twelve council members, and fourteen are present now. Do you wish to take that up?
Yes.
And that's an ordinance.
All right, we have no speaker cards on that item. There is no one in the queue, so would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next item.
Madam President, item number six is confirmation of Mr. Gilbert Bautista to the L.A. Convention and Exhibition Center authority.
Is Mr. Bautista here? Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to make any introductory remarks on Mr. Bautista? If not, maybe you can give us a few words about why you'd like to be reappointed, Mr. Bautista.
Well, good morning, first of all. Thank you for having me, and I thank the mayor for nominating me again for this opportunity to serve the city. It's been a good year, understanding how the Convention Center operates, and I think I can contribute with another extension to my duties.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are no speakers in the queue on that, on your reappointment, so I guess you're doing a good job. So let's open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Congratulations. Thank you very much for your service.
Next item, Madam President, is item number one. That has a card, and the action is to receive and file inasmuch as the lien has been paid on that one. Item number one, and it has a card.
Arnold Sacks is our speaker on item number one.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Item number one, actually, item number one, two, and four all contain notation. This one says seven-seven-seven-six West Foothill Boulevard, AKA seven-seven-seven-six Foothill Boulevard. Item number two, eight-six-eight-four-zero Crenshaw Boulevard, AKA six-eight-three-six Crenshaw Boulevard. And item number four, one-one-two-one East Anaheim Street, AKA one-one-two-one-dash-two-three East Anaheim Street. I appreciate the use of the AKA significance, means that that name also accompanies another name. But when I come before the council and say, what is the Mid-City Expo Line and its connection to the Expo Light Rail Transit Line, there's no AKA. Well, if there's no AKA, then it supports my argument that it's a different project. And it's a different project that right now is costing the city, and costing this public, not the city, forty million dollars. You use AKA here for these dinky
Excuse, stop the clock, please, Mr. Sacks. I'm going to have to ask you to please stay on topic.
I am, Madam Chair.
We're talking about seven-seven-seven-six West Foothill Boulevard and a lien against that property, so if you are able, would you please try and stay on topic? Okay, go ahead and start his clock again.
And if you would, Madam Chair, able to read, it says AKA. I am focusing on the use of the city attorney's language and the city council's language of AKA, when and where they want to use it. Now, if they want to use it for, for these property liens, then they should use it throughout city business. And the city business that I'd like to see them use it on is the Mid-City Exposition Light Rail Line, which you sit as chairperson of the construction authority. Because when we come before you and ask for updates on that, nothing is, nothing is forthcoming. Now, if it's not an AKA of the mid, of the exposition construction, then it's a different
Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon is our first speaker in the queue.
You items seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. Still next to me. Pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
And Madam President, the action on this is to receive and file inasmuch as the lien has been paid on this.
All right, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Now, may I continue? I wanted to continue items seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, till next, till the next meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alarcon, what was the date you wanted to continue those until?
Pardon me? Friday's good.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Next item is item number fifteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas, I think you're okay now. Mr. Cardenas has no need to speak at this point. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item, so let's
Madam President, excuse me, a motion is required on that one inasmuch as the committee submitted without recommendation, the CLA recommendations.
If I, if I could just jump in here briefly, out of abundance and caution, if we, if the council could adopt the CLA report and receive and file the committee report.
Correct. Okay. Move the, move the CLA report and, and receive and file the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. So we're acting on Mr. Cardenas's motion pursuant to city attorney recommendation. So Madam Clerk, if you would now open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next item.
Next item is item number sixteen, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Could I ask the Fire Department, come on up. Colleagues, as you know, we've been wrestling over this whole issue of headcount for the captains that have to do with our safety in the paramedic world. Please introduce yourself and tell us the kind of strategy that seems to have been worked out.
My name is David Yamahata, Chief of Staff for the Fire Department. Over the past probably several months, we've been working very closely with council members, the labor organizations, both UFLAC and the chief officers, and the fire chief in coming up with some revenue funding sources to maintain our 18 EMS captains that were not funded in the initial budget.
And explain what that is, EMS captain. What is that?
The EMS captains, their functions are, priority is to oversee patient care for the citizens of Los Angeles. What they do is they're dispatched on large-scale medical incidents. They were a very valuable resource at the recent MetroLink catastrophic incident that we had, as well as the recent brush fires. They were utilized in handling or assisting in patient care. They also assist our resources when the hospitals get overloaded in trying to find beds for patients that are being transported to the hospital. They assist in making that transfer of patient care.
So, this is nine, and then another nine, eighteen. How does that numbers work?
The total, initially, when we started our current fiscal budget, there were, there was not funding for 18 EMS captains, which basically would staff six EMS offices throughout the city. So, by maintaining the 18 captains, we can maintain the same level of service that our citizens of Los Angeles have been used to.
And with this understanding, when we get into the budget process in April and May, rubber hits the road, $400 million deficit, how does this stand through that process?
We understand, as a department, in our projected budget for next fiscal year, we will have to continue to search for additional revenue sources to ensure that we can maintain those 18 EMS captains for our next fiscal budget.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Madam President, for this discussion. And I obviously recommend an aye vote from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zein.
Thank you, Madam President. The Fire Department used to put out fires. Eighty-five percent of your calls now are what?
EMS calls.
EMS calls. So, the paramedic service is primary, where the firefighters, paramedics, basic life support, advanced life support, the main thrust of the Los Angeles City Fire Department now is rescuing people for medical purposes. And while they still put out fires-
Right.
-but the majority of the calls are for medical purposes.
That is correct. But what I don't want to discount is the firefighting side of our job, although a majority of our calls are emergency medical service calls.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Madam President, it's kind of hard to hear with everybody talking.
If I could ask people on the sides of the chamber to either take their conversations out into the hallway behind the chamber or in the back of the chamber, because the noise is bouncing back and forth and it's very difficult to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I stated earlier, although a majority of our calls, as you indicated, eighty-five percent are emergency medical service calls, which generate revenue for the city, I don't want to discount the firefighting side of it in a perspective of firefighting side of it. That's the dangerous side of it. That's where members get injured and possibly even lose their lives. So, although we don't have as many incidents, it's still a major portion or concern of our department in terms of training and so forth.
And I know when the winds come and Santa Ana shows up, we have some devastating blazes. So, I don't want to discount that. My intention is not to mitigate the fire side of the Fire Department, but to emphasize the importance of having those EMS fire captains because of the calls for service that are in large in number for, whether it's an accident victim, a trap victim, extrication, whatever the case may be. And there are the senior folks that know how to make sure that these people get the right treatment so their lives are saved.
Exactly. That is correct, especially our EMS captains, when they arrive on scene, are the highest authority in terms of ensuring that proper patient care is administered to the patients out there.
So, in a police situation, an officer responds, a supervisor shows up, the situation escalates, lieutenant shows up, captain shows up, commander shows up, the Fire Department has the EMS captain who takes lead of that particular situation.
That is correct.
To make sure that all the services are properly distributed, and if a large incident occurs, such as the train crash in Chatsworth, you'll have multiple rescue, multiple EMS captains to make sure that they can save the lives of those injured parties.
Exactly. Part of their responsibility is also to provide liaison, again, to the hospitals. They do that on a routine basis. They know the staff people that work in the emergency care facilities and so forth, so that when we do have any kind of catastrophic incident and so forth, they already have that relationship to ensure that we can provide the best care for our people.
So, the Fire Department wants these 18 EMS captains for the protection of the people of Los Angeles.
Exactly.
And there was some issue that came up in the committee when we discussed this regarding a lawsuit, and there was a settlement, and part of that settlement would basically be paid for if we didn't have these EMS captains, the proportion of the dollars.
Yes, that is correct.
So, what we need to do is take that equation out and say, "We need to fund this very important service for the safety of Los Angeles."
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. There are no further speakers in the queue. So, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Item number 19, called special for cards.
Okay. Our, Mr. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker. And while Mr. Sacks is making his way up here, why don't we let Mr. Zuma Dog go first?
Yeah, there's no Alarcon here, so-
Yes, I'd like to take one minute, because as candidate for mayor, it's come to my attention that the rent escrow program is coming through this agenda every day, is very corrupt, vindictive, retaliatory. There's a federal lawsuit being filed, and right now, one of the council members gave me the old scoff like, "Oh, well." So, let me explain what's happening. We have low-income renters that are in these mom-and-pop apartment buildings owned by, excuse me, please, I'm talking about the thing that I feel is the biggest problem in the city that's going to cost you a lot of money, and as somebody who came in here and warned you about Venice Beach, it costs you half a million dollars, I'd say I'm right, so you should listen to problems with REAP. They're putting these mom-and-pop landlords, forcing these aesthetic improvements on them. The banks won't let them do them. Then the city puts them in the rent escrow, "Oh, you're a bad landlord," and then they takes over. And then these mom-and-pop property owners are forced to sell their properties. It goes to the city council preferred developer of choice. They flip it to a million-dollar condo. The renters are kicked out onto the streets, and the city pretends to care about it. Zuma Dog as mayor will fix the rent escrow problem.
Mr. Sacks.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Just real quick, when will the Grand Avenue project fall into REAP discussion? The money that's tied up funding for the Grand Avenue project through CRA and other government agencies certainly makes it fall into REAP. Just looking for city action. The county is delaying action for two mon- two weeks, whether to decide on penalties being imposed on them. Waiting for the city council-
Madam President, the speaker is, again, off-topic and should be warned.
Please stop my time.
Stop the clock, please, for Mr. Sacks.
Thank you. So, I can be warned?
Uh, Mr. Sacks, you hear the admonition from the city attorney. We will start the clock again, if you could please stay on topic. Start the clock, please.
I mention again, waiting for the city council to take action, putting the Grand Avenue project in REAP. Thank you.
All right, there's no further speakers, cards on this item, and no speakers in the queue, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item.
Item number 20, called special for cards.
All right, we have, I'm going to call Arnold Sacks, but Mr. Zuma Dog is here at the podium. Mr. Sacks will be second. Mr. Sacks is waving off his right to speak. So, Mr. Zuma Dog and Mr. Clyde Williams.
Yes, today, we're talking about the environment, and here it talks about the ports of Los Angeles and the Department of Water and Power. And I'm here to say, as mayor, I'm sorry, I'm not mayor yet, I'm sir, as candidate for mayor of Los Angeles, something that's not discussed a lot about, but it's the biggest thing in the whole region, that the federal government needs to do much more. The ports of L.A., forty percent of all produced goods in the country come through the L.A. ports and down the 710 and through the freeway systems, and it's causing incredible smog and the kids and the schools and the people and the things, they sound like the governor here. So, L.A. bears a real, real high burden on its shoulders, and we need, as mayor, okay, if I am mayor, first thing I'll do, I'll call Barack Obama. You need to get some federal money to mitigate these circumstances, y'all, because the smog is unbearable, and it's because you need us, you need our ports, and so you need to help fix the problem. It's a big, big issue, and it's a gubernatorial issue as well.
Mr. Williams.
Dr. Williams. Hello? My name is Clyde Williams. I live at 4115 Barrett Road in El Sereno. As member of the L.A. Audubon Conservation Committee, I participated in this group, the collaborative. It is not collaborative. Within three months, it was obvious that it was a government association, which did not want any participation, really, from any of the green organizations or the public. Interesting elements. Core objectives. What are its core objectives? If you go to the last part of the presentation, it says, "L.A. City as lead member will adequately prepare for the adverse impacts." Sorry, guys, sustainability, climate change is going to have more impacts than you can ever imagine at this time. It should be adequately respond to and prevent the adverse impacts from occurring. L.A. as 10% of the California population should be in the leadership. Interesting aspect, in the early days of this collaborative, L.A. County was taking the lead. Why isn't L.A. County the lead member of the steering committee? Community impact statement. Well, none was submitted, because this collaborative has not tried to incorporate the neighborhood councils or its overall coalition organizations into the process. I would highly recommend that you not do this one. As far as costs are concerned, it has cost a lot of money, of time, of employees to participate in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First speaker in the queue is Ms. Grue, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Ms. Perry, I just want to, you were part of this motion as well, to create this L.A. regional collaboration for climate and sustainability, and really, and we have the representatives from Environment L.A., our department here in Los Angeles, which would really be a unique and visionary way in which to pull together representatives of local government, public agencies, environmental agencies, private businesses, academia, et cetera. And it really would be to establish a regional plan, which includes baselines of current greenhouse gas emission levels, targets that we would have, and mandates, developing mechanisms for tracking programs that, and progress in reducing those emissions, and also providing us with strategies on how to move forward. And it really would create cross-jurisdictional kinds of relationships, which we think are critically important, and really to share best practices here in Los Angeles. Environment L.A. would represent the city's lead agency of the steering committee, of the collaborative, and coordinate the participation by other city departments, including the port, the World Airports, L.A. Department of Water and Power, and other general managers of appropriate city departments. And I think you're going to work with UCLA in doing some modeling as well to secure some funding for that work, as we're trying to look for funding outside our general fund as we look at a tight budget. So, maybe you'd like to just say a few words about the collaborative. They came to me, and we were talking about things that we could do differently and how we could be supportive, and this was one of the ideas and things that Environment L.A. has been working on. So, if you'd like to, please say a few words.
I would, thank you. Beth Johns, the Assistant General Manager of Environment L.A. Thank you, Councilmember Grue. We, especially in this very tight and difficult budget time, I think organizations such as the collaborative will provide some cost savings by the sharing of best management practices. In terms of the work with UCLA, we, UCLA has offered to provide office space for a director for the collaborative when that person, when we get the funding and hire that person, and also to provide support. They are very supportive of the idea of tackling climate change and sustainability through regional efforts. We have met with the vice chancellor there for research, and he is firmly agrees with the belief that, as a region, we will be able to accomplish much more than as separate entities.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank you for your hard work. I know this takes a lot of effort to coordinate so many different stakeholders in the region. But back in November of '08, we passed a motion where we highlighted Senate Bill 375 under Senator Steinberg, in which there we directed the Planning Department to be the lead with assistance of all these different departments that I'm sure you're working with. And I just want to get an understanding of how that's being coordinated, what type of progress has been established, and just give us a perspective of how you see this unfolding, knowing that we have these overlapping goals and different directives coming at you at the same time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. We have, actually, we've had several meetings with planning and also with the Southern California Association of Governments on the subject of SB 375. One of the things that we did in establishing the collaborative was look at it as a possible mechanism for the implementation of SB 375. We have put together an outline for how that might work, and then also how some of the city's efforts, such as the modeling work that we would like to do with UCLA, in order to figure out where our vulnerabilities are in climate change and how we can address those, what vulnerabilities may present themselves in the future. That would also play into the implementation of 375. It's an ongoing discussion with the collaborative. I think it's a good forum to get everyone together, because the SB 375 requires the development of a sustainable city strategy, which is, should be a region that's larger than the city but smaller than SCAG, for example. So, this is a perfect format to actually begin that work.
Well, one of the main objectives of SB 375 is it seeks to limit our carbon footprint by encouraging smart growth and development plans. Now, when we go through those, through that analysis, are we going to factor in the levels of contamination pollution around freeway corridors, the need to offset that with greening strategies? Is that the direct, I mean, I just want to get a sense of the nature of the discussion that's beginning to take place.
That certainly would be a strategy, and some of the discussions have involved, you know, looking at cumulative impacts, what areas are more impacted by environmental stressors than other areas, and incorporating that sort of information into planning and into transportation, as well as housing planning. That's certainly one of the, I mean, that's the purpose of it, is to try to tie, you know, land use, transportation, and climate change and the impacts together in a cohesive look at how they impact each other.
You know, and one of the variables that I, that keeps coming up in my experience of working with, how we address the needs of the city, is that we find ourselves accumulating a lot of trash on our curbs, along our gutters. They tend to be in places where high density is evident. You got thirty, fifty, up to seventy thousand people per square mile. Yet, our city policies are such that we allocate resources based on geography, on size of districts, of real estate, not the activity of people. Yet, we pay for that penalty when- Yet we pay for that penalty when this trash and debris goes into our system, our sewer systems, our stormwater systems, goes to the river and ends up in the ocean. Yet we choose not to address that. It is a controversial issue, because it means having to reshuffle how we assess our priorities and our policy, and how we clean our sidewalks and streets. Do you see ourselves engaging at that level of discussion? It will be more general in terms of parameters and looking how cities and agencies work together. I just want to get a sense of how deep you think this will go.
Good morning, Councilmembers Gretchen Hardison and Environment LA. As you know, the city's general plan, and we're going through the community plan redevelopment process now, there are a number of policies that the city has that do encourage certain types of higher-density development in certain parts of the city. And I think one of our challenges now is, one of the things you mentioned, is how do we make those work? How do we actually implement those? Working with good policies, working with other jurisdictions to see how those interrelate, and what situations occur when we increase density. I think that's certainly on our plate. I obviously don't have any answers as of yet.
No, but I just want to give that as an example of some of the challenges we have as, as a council, as the mayor's office. We're trying to find ways to clean our streets and clean our sidewalks. We're trying to clean our riverway, our ocean. Yet our policies aren't reinforcing real results because of decade-old policies that go back to the 40s and 50s.
Right. Parking is another area that has come up already in our early discussions, so there are a number of issues that need to be addressed.
I look forward to, I just felt it's important to state this for the record, that these are concerns that one consumer has, and back in November 2008, along with the Harvard Consumer Rule and putting forth this other effort, that we're able to leverage these resources and not forget the end purpose of our previous directives. So I appreciate the coordination, and I look forward to your reports. When do you think your first report might surface?
The first report? It's a little difficult to say right at the moment. We're, you know, we're just in the process of getting the formation done, but we do have an outline of how, you know, what we're going to be addressing through the next year. So perhaps we can share that, and that could be our first report, and then we just begin implementation as quickly as possible.
I look forward to that. Well, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I know it's not going to be easy, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, followed by Mr. Huesar.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a no-brainer, but let me just read you your mission statement and ask you a quick question. Environment LA also reports that the collaborative is a unique and visionary effort pulled together by representatives of local government, public agencies, environmental organizations, academia, and private business. The core objectives, it says, "Build a regional action plan which includes establishing baselines of current greenhouse gas emission levels. Identify greenhouse gas emissions, reduction targets, and mandates. Developing a mechanism for tracking progress and reducing those emissions, and providing strategies to help meet these goals." The second objective says, "The plan would proactively create cross-jurisdictional public-private partnerships to leverage support of the regional action plan development and implementation, and share information and best practices on climate change and other sustainability goals with stakeholders in the Los Angeles region of the urgency in addressing global climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions." That's the mandate. Will there be any kind of teeth into it so that we can somehow cause these emissions to be less? Where do we see it going?
Well, what we see is the development, each of the cities within, or not each of them, but many of the cities within the Los Angeles region have very, have aggressive greenhouse gas emissions. But by coordinating our efforts, I think that we can share best management practices, we can share resources, and we can force, so to speak, the, a greater sense of urgency for the climate change actions, and provide just information and coordination on moving forward to reduce the emissions. I think part of, part of our problem is that there really isn't enough of a sense of urgency, and the region, I think we need to create that within the region so that we can get more activity done by individuals, and then we will be able to reach a larger group of people through the numbers of organizations that...
They all make sense, but is there a carrot and a stick here? Do we have a stick at all? I mean, talk is cheap, it's actions. How do we get people to get off the dime and deal with climate change?
At this point, we're hoping the collaborative can assist in developing the emissions inventories. The city of Los Angeles has already developed inventories for our municipal operations. We will be working with some, with the Los Angeles County and others to look at the larger community. We're meeting with ICLI this, the end of this week, to look at their new methodology for actually going out into the community and making some real good, solid estimates of current levels of emissions. I would imagine if the collaborative becomes involved more with the Sustainable Community Strategy under SB 375, that there would be a way to work in a bit of a stick.
Well, we need a stick, you know? And this could go from Santa Barbara to San Diego. It's the whole region. There are twenty-five million of us here in the basin, and we're all impacted by climate change, as is the whole planet. So what I'd like to see is we go forward with this touchy-feely interaction, that we put some teeth into it, that begins to say, we can no longer continue to be so irresponsible in polluting our air. I mean, I like the fact we're getting together. I think the collaborative is a first step, but I think we need to think of ways in which we can actually regulate the emissions going forward. And I look forward to your reporting back with some ideas that maybe we could either codify on the city level, county level, or the state level, that, you know, brings everybody to the table, and frankly, forces them to appreciate that climate change is real, we want to keep our earth going, we need to act now. But thank you so much for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I would also mention that we, part of the charge of the collaborative will be to conduct some actual science-based data gathering, such as what Gretchen talked about, and then the modeling work, so that we will have, you will have the science in order to make decisions on infrastructure development.
Will UCLA help us on that?
Yes, they are going to.
What is their role in all this?
They, they have, they're going to house the collaborative at UCLA. They've also, will be providing support and helping us take the science of climate change and translating that into policy.
Very good. And the policy might end up with a couple of sticks?
Yes, I believe it will.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Huesar.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Gruehl, for bringing this to our attention. I often say that, just like civil rights movement defined a generation before, it's going to define this generation, and how we respond to global warming, or how little we respond to it. And certainly, now with the new president at the helm, at least we have someone, a leader of this country, who recognizes that global warming is certainly real, and it's not fiction. And the city has done and attempted several efforts, as we all know, to provide a greener city, from reducing our diesel emissions at the harbor, to providing an ordinance to have more LEED-certified buildings, to Measure B. There's a lot of attempts, but what I like about what we're doing with AB 32 is that we are going to put that, all those efforts, not only the city of Los Angeles, but others, in numbers, and we're going to measure how we're doing, we're going to set goals, so that all these sporadic efforts that we're doing everywhere kind of get quantified, so we really know how we're doing, because it's not enough just to get initiative after initiative after initiative, without really knowing what's the true impact of those initiatives. And I know that the California Air Resources Board recently took an input as to, from the public, as to how to go about in implementing AB 32, and I look forward to more discussion on this, not only with the city of Los Angeles, but regionally, because obviously there are no, these are all just political boundaries we create. These are man-made, woman-made boundaries. It's really going to have an impact regionally, and so I like this collaborative effort that Ms. Gruehl is urging the city to get involved with. But as I look forward, I just want to keep us in mind about folks, which perhaps have felt most of the impact in environmental injustice in the past, which is low-income folks, that perhaps will not have the means, because all that we're doing here is going to cost a little bit more. It's going to cost the public more in terms of the public coffers, but it's going to cost individual families a little bit more to adhere to some of these new regulations. And we should think about how we're going to allow low-income families and individuals to participate, not only in being able to pay that higher cost, but also to receive the benefits. And that's something that I hope as we implement, one of the most important things we do in our generation, that we certainly address. And finally, I was at a Breathe L.A. seminar where, actually, Ms. Gruehl and I kicked off the Salon Series for this coming year, and I want to ask everybody to get involved, inform yourselves. I'm learning about this, we're all learning about this. It's nice that major 500 corporation, what do you call them, the 500, what do you call them?
Fortune 500.
Fortune 500 companies. They all have these great commercials about how green they are, but nobody really knows what that is. And a couple of weeks ago, myself and Ms. Perry organized an AB 32 workshop here in the city, so that our staffs could get more informed about this, because we have a lot more learning to do in this area, but the more we learn about it, the better we are going to be able to address it. So thank you for this effort. I think this was a great collaborative we're getting involved with, and it's really a new frontier, but it is going to be one of the most important things we do in our lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huesar. There's no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, if you would, please open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Item number 21, called specially Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I appreciate that very much. Could we have the representative from Julia Brownlee's office come on up and give us a quick discussion of this? Louise Rishoff. Hold my time, please. Explain, explain the Assemblymember's legislation.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker, Councilmembers. This one is easy, because essentially what AB 68 does, which Assemblymember Brownlee has introduced, is exactly what the city of LA has already done proactively at the city level. I'm sorry. We're really following the lead of your city. The city of LA has been so proactive on so many environmental initiatives, you beat us to it on this one. But AB 68 is going to impose a 25-cent fee on plastic bags and paper bags, which are such a, not only scourge to the environment, but really putting great stress on the landfills of the city's mandates to reduce waste in the landfill system. It's not going to take very long, I think, for this bill to be effective. One trip to the grocery store at 25 cents a bag is going to equal the dollar it's going to cost for people to buy the canvas bags that are already available and in such wide use. Assemblymember wanted me to thank Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Perry in particular for bringing this resolution forward, and for the leadership that the council has shown. And I'm, would also like to just take a point of personal privilege, if I may, on behalf of the Assemblymember, to publicly thank Councilmember Smith for your leadership and support a year ago in Senate Bill 990, getting the Rocket Dime site heavily contaminated, having the city on board, and I thank the council for that as well. So we're...
Appreciate that, and Ms. Smith is the hero here. She's been working on it for a long time, many years, and has brought it to our level of awareness, very much so, and he's a great colleague of mine. Just one quick question. Some folks who use plastic bags, like to pick up the dog poop as they go along, or use it for other things, how will those types of folks be impacted by this?
Well, those are probably going to have to go into the trash. We would hope that as plastic bags become more difficult to, you know, become more expensive, that people would look for other options, you know, the little mutt mitts, which are at least smaller, biodegradable products, and they should not be using, having their dogs use public property for that purpose, of course, at all, so education would help greatly.
Yeah, because one of the things we have to look at, even though we want to ban plastic, some plastic has become indispensable for certain situations. It isn't just the grocery bag we're talking about, because some people have some interest, and there are not necessarily a canvas bag that could be used for some of these things. So when we go forward, we have to have some caveats for some special need situations where plastic seems to be the only, the only mechanism we can use. But the concept of getting rid of plastic is obviously a good one. We don't want it in the streams, we don't want it in the bellies of the fish, we don't want to see it tearing up our environment like it has for so long, and be, you know, unable to be degradable or recycled. So it's a good thing, and Julia Brownlee is my rep, and so I'm very happy to see her leadership.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmember. Thank you very much.
Mr. Smith. Thank you, and I thank Louise for being here on behalf of the Assemblymember, and a former Councilmember, as I recall, too. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You dealt with a lot of these issues, and I appreciate your work there. Just to remember, last year, the city council took an action to create our own ordinance, because, one, the bill in the legislature, the Levine bill, was on the right track, but had some flaws in it that really wasn't in our best interest, we thought, as a city. It was going in the right direction, but not the complete solution. And I believe that Assemblymember Brownlee's bill is really the complete solution that allows local participation in the process, and that we can generate some revenue for our education program. At the same time, it focuses not just on plastic bags, but single-use bags, which is important. That includes also the paper bags, which we want to get out of the landfill. So all of this is really a very good bill, it's very insightful, and I appreciate your being here, and I know the council's going to support this, as we've done in the past, and I look forward to going up to Sacramento as soon as you get that other problem solved.
Yeah, she's a little busy right now.
Yeah, a little busy. Send her up, we'll send her up some water and food for the floor and all that, but hopefully that'll be resolved in very near time, and we can get back to doing these kind of business things that are so important to the state's future. And when that comes, if the Assemblymember will let us know when a measure is scheduled in committee, so that we can have appropriate representatives there on behalf of the city, and I would be happy to come up if possible and speak to the legislature as well on that. Thank you very much.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I applaud my colleagues, and I thank our leadership in Sacramento for moving this language. I also want to remind the council that we, as a council, did pass a couple of policies. One is to ban food packaging polystyrene from city facilities, and hopefully we'll get a progress report on how we're doing, because the deadline for that was July 1, 2009. We also passed a policy that agreed that we would pursue a ban or a fee if the state does not pass some sort of plastic bag legislation by 2010. So I'm glad the state is moving forward, my colleagues are on top of this, and I'm glad we're able to establish this type of momentum. But I really think our own city family should start defining what that ordinance will look like since 2010 is the deadline. So instead of waiting for the last minute, we should start getting some actual language working on this ordinance, so hopefully we'll get some feedback from the departments. I believe it's Bureau of Sanitation along with the City Attorney's Office. So that's something that we look forward to as well, so it doesn't sneak up on us. So I just want to just raise these points to my colleagues, that we're very focused on this, and we're hoping to have some results. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. If there's nobody else who wishes to be heard, glad this passed the Rules and Government Committee, and has our strong support as well, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And we'll send that forthwith without objection. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 23, and that was called Special for Cards.
Okay, item number 23 is next. We have a card from Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. For the record, my name's Zuma Dog, official candidate for mayor on the ballot March 3, and what this is about is creating an advisory board. Can you please put the item up for the people at home? It's an advisory board for Washington regarding urban development. I'd like to be appointed to that advisory board, thank you. So I'm asking council to please appoint me to this board. Here's some things I'd talk about. First of all, we need emergency shelter for homeless. Top priority, as more and more people be pushed out into the streets, I would propose there's a $250,000 a month late fee that Grand Avenue Project is supposed to be paying. I ask that you please make them pay the late fee, as they're supposed to, and you can put that money to the emergency shelter that is needed, since they took the money from Prop 1(c)(c) and put it into the park that we no longer need, and that they can no longer build. Also, money for the nonprofits. There's federal and state money given to nonprofits through City Hall. I want to make sure, I'm very concerned of front-end-loaded management contracts. BMW is being purchased. Acronism, nepotism, for example. Richard Alarcon is going to be giving $200,000 to a nonprofit of Cindy Montez's sister. Cindy Montez dropped out of the race against Alarcon, she got a commissioner appointment, and now her sister's going to get $200,000 of money for nonprofits out of the city.
Mr. President, I don't believe this is on topic.
Well, as somebody that'd like to be appointed...
Please focus on the advisory group to the White House.
The reason I'd like to be appointed to the Advisory Commission is to make sure that these types of things... these types of things don't happen and to make sure the money earmarked for the community makes it into the community. Also, we have a lot of kids of bad parents, and as I'm running for mayor, I've learned a lot about compassion, and they say, gee, Zuma, you know, you might have a parent that's locked up. That doesn't make the kid bad. So, we have to make sure the kids of bad parents and a lot of the prisoners of kids, that they are treated fairly. We have foster programs where they're being abused. We cannot just sweep good, innocent kids under the rug and ignore them. These are things I'll focus on as the advisory commissioner appointment. I'm asking you to support.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for the motion. Was happy to second it. This is something that we look forward to happening. I've been working with the administration and before the transition team on establishing this new office of urban policy in the United States for the first time. And what's great about that is, you know, as a candidate, then Senator Obama promised to do this, but what we see so often with urban policy is that exists in its silos. Housing and urban development does this piece, HHS does its piece, transportation does its piece, labor does its piece. Right now, when we see the dislocation of workers and people losing their homes, oftentimes we need to have a multi-pronged approach to urban policy again. And let us remind ourselves that over the last eight years, colleagues, we've seen about a 60% cut in job training dollars for our cities, about a 40% cut in our affordable housing and community development block grant monies. That was something, those programs increased every year through Republican and Democratic administration alike up until the last eight years, which is why it's critical now that we have the first big city president in over a century to refocus on our cities and to make sure that cities lead our recovery. And that battle certainly isn't over. We've seen in the recovery package what happens when that goes to places like the Senate and takes away some of the discretionary dollars that would have come directly to our cities, and we need our viewers and the public to continue to contact Congress and others to allow cities to have that discretion over how we can spend money quickly to get that out there. But most importantly, this office of urban policy, which I think we'll have a good friend leading soon, will be able to coordinate across these different departmental lines to think about cities as cities, not cities as policy silos. So, with that, we appreciate that. This certainly continues to help that internal momentum for creating this in the White House. It'll be the first time that we've ever seen one, and it should be one that will have a good, close friendship here to Los Angeles very soon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item. Next item is item 24, and that was called special for cards, and Mr. Weezer also called that special, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Thank you. We do have two public speaker cards. Mr. Weezer, you want to hear from Mr. Zuma Dogg and Michelle Dean?
Yes.
Okay, that's first?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Zuma Dogg? Mr. Zuma Dogg? Okay, Michelle?
I just want to thank the council for support with this project. Apparently, we all already know that this is to support a Green Lead certified facility for a mentoring program in Boyle Heights due to the state budget freeze awarded money that was already awarded to Girls Today, Women Tomorrow from the Murray Hayden Fund. So, I just want to thank the council for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And councilmembers, there's been a substitute motion. I want to thank Councilwoman Perry for also allowing us to use some of her funds. This is a loan, ladies and gentlemen, because of the state impasse, the state budget impasse that we have. This great organization that provides mentoring and activities for young men, women in Boyle Heights have not been able to move forward with a project, a place they could call their own, so we are providing a loan so that they could move forward with the project and meet the escrow deadline. And I want to thank this group for doing one full work for our young women. I've been at several of their events, and I wouldn't want to see this project delayed any further because of the great service that's provided in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. No members wish to be heard. Decides Mr. Weezer. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 25, that was called special for cards, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed on 25G.
Okay. Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, and then we have Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, good morning. I would like to speak on item number H, which is a relative declaring the 42nd Annual Palace Verdi's Marathon, half marathon, and 5K community run and walk on May 2nd, 2009, a special event. It must be a special event because it's being held on a weekend. I thought when the L.A. Marathon changed the date from mid-March to Monday in February, and City Council action accompanied a change with a law stating that marathons must be run on Mondays, Mondays only. Well, I said, that's what it said. That's what they said. Well, Mr. City Attorney, you're shaking your head, so maybe you could clarify that because you did, when you had a triathlon scheduled on the 16th, I brought that forth, that triathlon includes a marathon, and it was mentioned that the law only pertains to certain marathons that, I guess this wouldn't be one of those certain marathons. So, how many other marathons are running in the City of L.A. that the law that was passed when Frank McCourt moved the L.A. Marathon to Monday so it could be run on a holiday, and then without a hearing moved it to Memorial Day? How many other marathons are affected by that law? And I'd also like to point out that you're having an amendment or a motion passed through the council that's not been posted for public comment in violation of the Brown Act. Brown Act states amendments and agenda items must be posted 72 hours in an area that is always accessible to the public. 72 hours prior to the meeting in an area that's always accessible to the public. Motion's posted in City Council chambers, which is closed, is not always...
Thank you very much. Sure, yeah. The City Attorney would like to clarify something?
I just checked with the CLA, and the amending motion was posted on the board.
Okay. Michael Carrion is our next speaker. Thank you, sir. Mr. Carrion? Okay, Mr. Carrion is not here. Mr. Dogg reached his limit, I believe. Okay, that will close our public comment on this one. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item's item 28, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han on item 28.
Thank you. I'd like if it's okay with everybody to continue this for 30 days.
Any objection to continuing item 28 for 30 days? That would take us to the 20th of March. If not, we'll go ahead and continue till then. Next item, please.
Item number 30, called special for cards.
Okay, item number 30 we have, and we have a card from Clyde Williams.
My name is Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, L.A., 32 Neighborhood Council. The, oh, this morning, there was a TCT Committee meeting which remarked about the capabilities or adequacies of the neighborhood councils. One of the problems is that neighborhood councils are usually not consulted regarding many activities. Beautification of the CD 14 community is very laudable, except that there are several neighborhood councils involved in these, in CD 14, which have never been appraised of the projects coming from the CRA monies and/or from even this one within their own communities. There are usually committees either for environment or for beautification specifically that have not been consulted. We would like to have them consulted. Thank you.
Thank you. That will close our public comment on item 30. Any members wishing to be heard? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 38, excuse me, item 32, called special for cards.
Okay, Zuma Dogg not here.
Good morning. Hello, sir. Good morning, council. My name is General Jeff, I'm a community activist for Skid Row. My organization is Issues and Solutions. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. I definitely want to say commend Councilmembers Perry and Rosendahl for coming up with a motion for a program that is so important because as a community leader in Skid Row, I've been advocating for the people to address the issue of families, the influx of families coming to Skid Row, and I think that this program would definitely initiate something that needs to be followed up with more allocation of more monies towards programs such as this. So, keep up the good work, and thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, we'll close our public comment on 32. No members wish to be heard. Let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 34, called special for cards.
Okay. Zuma Dogg again. Do not see him here. So, we'll close public comment on that, and if we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 35, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
All right, Ms. Gruel, item 35.
Thank you. If we could have staff come up here? And it's good, I was going to say good afternoon, but it's only morning still. We continue this from the other day because I had a few questions, and I was not there at the end of the budget meeting when this was discussed, and particularly, I just wanted to ask on the, there were, the largest amount was the $1.37 million for LAPD, Public Works, Wreck and Parks, and DOT. And I think according to your department, the accounts were sent to the collection agencies, and the efforts were unsuccessful, and they're targeted for sale. And some of the others, we missed the statute of limitations, I know. Do we look, two questions. One is, how much do we think we're going to sell that debt for, that $1.37 million? And two, is there a process, and I know with the Office of Finance and some of the other departments are getting together as we talk about a collection sheriff and whether or not that's the role and so forth, Office of Finance and how we're coordinating between fire and the different departments. But it seems, are there some of these businesses or other individuals? I don't know. Again, I know with fire department, normally it's individuals and it's, they may not have insurance coverage to take care of their ambulance services, et cetera. But in these instances where we see uncollectibles in large amounts, are these existing businesses that are in the City of Los Angeles, places where we could ever get this money or say, unless you pay us, you can't have your, I mean, different things like that? Have we looked at that?
Councilmember Gruel, to answer your questions, first of all, the first question I believe that I heard was in terms of the debt that we're selling, what we...
Yes.
Could we anticipate receiving on that? And the reality is that we're really not looking to get more than a penny or two on the dollar. When this concept was originally proposed about four years ago, the economy was much different, and we expected a greater return. But because the market has, had an influx of bad paper, prices have gone down. So, we really don't expect to get more than a penny or two. But one of the advantages, too, is that it clears our books of these delinquent accounts, and it gives us a truer image of really what, of what our receivables are. And the second question that I believe that you asked was in terms of processes and policies within departments. We are working with departments as quickly and as much as possible to get them to institute best practices. And one of the things, as you mentioned about some of the receivables, we do have departments that do have large dollar amounts, DOT and fire in particular. And we are working with them, A, to get those accounts that have been deemed uncollectible to our board of review to be written off so that that's no longer reflected. So, we do believe we're moving in the right direction. We have undergone a number of new programs that we're attempting to implement that kind of fall under that umbrella of the collection sheriff, as you addressed, and perhaps we need to do a better job of keeping you and other interested parties abreast of our accomplishments. But they are coming along, and we are proud to say that...
Would you, would you maybe be able to provide to me, and we'll move forward on this item today, but on those departments, LAPD, Public Works, Wreck and Parks, and DOT, what kinds of companies, organizations are not paying their bills and the process? Because what I would hate to see, and we're looking at this, and Mr. Garcetti, I know, has been working on this, too, we're looking at our parking companies and their taxes and how that relates to the fire, the police department giving permits, and how we can ensure, because I think we're going to see this a lot, unfortunately, in the next year, where they're still proceeding and doing their business, and yet we are not getting our receivables that are necessary to respond to. I mean, this is $1.37, you know, $3.7 million. To be able to identify who and how these people, I know the Office of Finance is looking at, you know, some of the businesses that are not paying their taxes and ways in which to do that, but I'm not sure the department, if LAPD has 339K in Public Works, is there something that LAPD is doing that someone may also be a contractor with Public Works? I just don't know within the city. Is there a process where there is a comparison there?
There is. I mean, we do do annual reviews or try to do them on an annual basis of departments. You talked about the kind of accounts that aren't paying. We know that emergency medical services with the fire department continues to be an issue that we're working with them to try to address and are proposing change to the governing ordinance to allow those to be referred to collection agencies. Also, you mentioned about the parking issues. We're working with LAPD now about a parking revocation program for those parking lots that are not in compliance, whereby they don't have a proper police permit or they're behind on their business taxes, to revoke those licenses. So, those are concerns, and we continue to try to move forward in addressing those. We are working very closely with LAPD right now to try to shut down lots that don't have the proper permitting.
Right. Because I'm just not sure, and maybe, I don't know, Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks?
Mr. Parks.
Mr. Parks? If, on this one item, on the Office of Finance, and I, again, I don't want to, you know, lengthen our time, but we're only going to get a penny on the dollar, so another week or two. And this one part where it has Office of Finance for the LAPD, Board of Public Works, Wreck and Parks, and DOT, that $1.37 million, to have a better understanding of who those delinquent accounts are and the coordination between the departments, to maybe just put that one part back to your committee, our committee, just to consider so we look at that. Because I think your policy with LAPD is great, and that really is work, you know, I believe it's going to work, and I know there's been some civil referrals and so forth with some of the parking companies. But I want to make sure, because I'm, on Board of Public Works, that's a, you know, $536,000 that we are writing off, whether or not any of those companies are doing business with the city in another department and what the process is before we write that off.
We do attempt to, as you say, kind of do a cross-check to make that determination. One of the issues you know we're moving toward is the centralization of accounts receivable throughout the city. And once that process is in place, we will have a handle on that, and that is moving forward. And we should have a consultant on board to assist us with that evaluation in very, very, very short order. So, once that's done, that won't be an issue. But we do try as best we can right now to cross-match and make sure that those, those companies aren't being compensated or receiving services when they are in fact out of compliance.
So, if it's okay with Mr. Parks, I would just like to refer that one item, not for a long period of time, but for you all to give us a list of, because I didn't see it in my report, it may be there, but I haven't seen it, of what these companies are and who they are in this. Are you okay with that, Mr. Parks?
List here.
You have the list.
Yeah.
But I do want to ask, I do want to ask the question of how we're coordinating between the departments, but I think some other of my colleagues have pushed their button, so maybe during that period of time, I'll have a conversation with Mr. Parks. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. So, this is, I mean, total, this is $1.6 million that you're asking today to remove from the books, as you call it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And as you said, we're only getting, you're hoping to get pennies on the dollar for this, so you're basically selling this debt?
This is... This is debt that has been determined to be uncollectible. We've exhausted all of our efforts in attempting to collect. Normal process would be to write off with zero recovery. So while the...
Can you hold my time?
While the sale would yield a very small revenue in relation to the amount, every little bit helps at this point.
So you are selling the debt?
That is our intention, yes.
Okay. And then when you say, because I know the public watching this probably has the same initial feeling that I did when I saw that. We're in a very tough time right now to think that we're basically just not collecting, and this has come before us several times and it's probably come before us again, writing off this debt. And when you say you've exhausted all possible efforts to collect this debt, are we using reputable collection agencies?
The collection agencies that we currently use are four contracted agencies that have demonstrated through the RFP process that they have the wherewithal and ability, they've provided references, et cetera. So we do believe that they are reputable, one of which is the largest in the country.
Right. And I've actually had issues with that, colleagues, by the way, and I've actually tried to get us to reopen the RFP process because we're contracting out collections to national firms. Most of them aren't here in Los Angeles. I know we have some small collection agencies right here in our city and I think this is the time when we ought to be able to, why not try out a small local collection agency who probably would love to get the chance to collect this 1.6 million dollars? What's, you know, what would we have to lose by relooking at? Now, RFP process and our contracting process, I know is very, you know, tight and we can't just end a contract, but I just feel like we may have national firms doing this, they may have all the references in the world, the fact of the matter is, you know, they're not collecting some of this debt. Wouldn't a small company probably love to get their hands on 1.6 million dollars, see if they could do it? What do we have to lose by giving this, instead of writing it off? What do we have to lose by giving this as maybe a pilot program to a local, small business in Los Angeles that could attempt to collect this? Zero from zero is zero, so we haven't lost, as my father used to always say, you don't have it now, you may not have it at the end, what have you lost? But you're giving a local business an opportunity to create some jobs. These are very, I think, good entry-level jobs, getting on the phone, trying to collect debt. What would we have to lose instead of writing this off, giving this to a local Los Angeles firm to see if they could collect this?
I'm sure that's a question posed to me specifically or just a, you know, statement to your colleagues.
Yeah.
But I mean, that is an administrative decision to be made.
Colleagues, that's the kind of, I mean, I just feel like the public is going to look badly at this. This is money that is owed to us. We know the controllers had audits on money that we should just be collecting, could help us begin to get out of our budget deficit that we're going to be facing. I don't know what it would take in terms of any kind of action. I have a feeling it's probably larger than I can even imagine. But it seems to me, if we're going to write this off anyway, why don't we offer it to a local firm and see what they could do with it? Again, I don't know what we have to lose. I know there's some other firms that would like to be in our pool of collections. We've kept it to just very large national chains. Again, I think this is a time we need to be looking towards creating jobs in Los Angeles and giving it to some smaller collection agency. I don't know how you all feel about that. Just kind of feels sick to me that we're basically getting rid of a million dollars. Basically, we're throwing it away. And I just don't know if that, this is the time to do that. So if I could have your support on that, I, again, I have no idea what that means in terms of bureaucracy in this city. I can't imagine this is going to be easy to do, but I think this would be an opportunity to try something else besides just throwing it away. Thank you.
Ms. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Gold in the gutter, Ms. Hahn, gold in the gutter. And we've got a lot of gold in the gutter around here we need to pick up and apples from the tree. Okay, here's the big question. From what I'm told, the inside story is that our lovely civil servants have had no incentive to try to collect these monies and therefore why do I care? Is there any truth to that, that the city has not really been aggressive enough to collect these monies?
I will acknowledge that I think one of our recommendations has been with several departments, that they should be more aggressive with their collections. Now, for the last three years, understand, since we've had the collection agency contracts in place, we asked departments to refer their accounts at 45 days of delinquency to the collection agencies. So if the amount is less than $1,000, it goes directly to the collection agency. If it's more than $1,000, it goes to our internal collection group. So the initial billing, is that possible, that that has occurred in some cases? It is possible, but under our current process, we really try to use those outside collection agencies as quickly and as much as possible.
Yeah, of course, the sooner you collect your debt, the quicker you'll get it, if in fact you'll ever get it, and statute of limitations sometimes stops it at a certain point in time. But could we create, thinking out of the box, a little bit of an incentive for a government worker that if they can bring the bread in, they get a piece of that bread? You know, share the loaf. It's better than nothing. And right now, we basically don't do much of anything as city employees to try to bring it in. Has anybody talked about an incentive program that somebody sitting at a desk could make that extra call and so maybe, you know, they would get a little compensation?
Conceptually, that has come up on a number of occasions. Generally, it's been dismissed under our current system as not possible.
What about Ms. Hahn saying, a local firm, somebody around the neighborhood that we could work with that would take more interest in it? I frankly don't like these big firms that come in, they harass the hell out of people and we get like one cent on the dollar, it's almost worthless for us to be doing it. You know, what about a local firm? What about incenting our people?
Both are possible. I acknowledge Ms. Hahn's concern about keeping business local. We went through a regular RFP process where everyone was eligible to participate and those were the firms that were deemed to be most qualified.
Okay. When we go through the budget process in the spring, we brought this up in committee and we had a little bit of a mild discussion. I'm looking forward in the budget process that we look at incenting our own government workers. You know, we're going to have to start worrying about healthcare for our government workers, retirement programs for our workers. We're in a tough spot in this nation and in this world. And wouldn't it be great if we could incent our government employees to bring that gold in the gutter back to the Treasury? So I look forward to some of these out-of-the-box thinking when we get into the budget committee.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Labons, then Mr. Parks, then Ms. Hahn, then Ms. Gruel.
Yeah, just real quickly, Ms. Hahn, I think we should have a department of this, that, the other thing. And we refer this to that department, okay? A special office, Mr. Miller, that creates a focus on can you capture? I don't know if there's gold in the gutter, as you explained, that it is, because of the trying times that many of the 4 million people experience in our city. Some of this debt is five years old, six years old, some may be even the last century if it's over nine years old, if my math is right. So I'd like to see if there was somebody there, but I would also, you did not supervise this collection, you reviewed the process that got us here, right?
That's correct. I mean, it's the department's collection process.
Before we made that step, Ms. Hahn, and I do believe in giving local people opportunity, I'd love to hear the people who actually did it and explain to us what challenges they have. Some people may have got their final call-in, some people may have moved to Texas, some people may have gone other places, and all that energy will be there and not in a successful way. But I do believe, Mr. CLA, there should be a special operation office that could handle things that no one else could handle, like a John Burey type of individual, I say that to Mr. Smith, one of his deputies, who does anything, does anything but make sure it's legally done, but let's think about that. But I would just say, I'd rather hear before we direct the next thing, from the people who actually did the work. Will it go back to committee? All right, I support Ms. Gruel, go back to committee, and maybe the persons who did the collection could express what their challenges were and what local firms could be around to help that. And was there some good compassion that the city may be expressed in trying to make a collection? You know, someone bought a car from somebody, the other person had multiple tickets, they never changed the DMV. What are these challenges that people have? We don't know the whole facts and figures. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering, on the issue that you just mentioned about the RFPs, do you know what companies receive those RFPs?
In terms of the number that was distributed, I don't have that available, but yeah.
Are they local? Do you know?
They were there, a number of national firms. It's normally listed on the, on the Bob in terms of the RFP, but I can provide the name.
Okay, yeah, we need to, the thing is, you know, what I think, just to give everybody an understanding, we've been struggling with this for the five years I've been on the council and generally what the shortfall is that comes up every time is that the departments are given the first cut at collecting their bills. They come up short. And often, they then put Department of Finance in a bind to where, once they come up short, they then go to Department of Finance, they then go out to these RFPs. Then the dilemma comes up is that they're now so dated that they're out of statute. And so we recently implemented that, rather than just waive them and forget about them, we then said, let's sell them to these companies for pennies on the dollar so you could at least retrieve. Because if you recall, a couple of years ago, and I think all of us were in distress, that we had at one time like $94 million of paramedic bills that were waived and we all pushed the button and held our nose. But these are the things that we find and every time we look at these, it comes right back to the departments taking excessive amount of time, failure to recover these in the earliest period, and then they go out to collections and then we're out of statute. And that's where we've gone back and forth and back and forth. And it's an issue that we've not been able to resolve in the Budget and Finance Committee, but we've tried to find ways to tweak it a little bit and figure out how do we address this issue? Because there's literally millions of dollars owed to the city and as you go through them, and I've shared it with Ms. Gruel, some of them are 1,500, some of them 1,000, some of them 900. The city attorney tells us that many instances, it's not worth the energy or the expense to put liens on these several hundred people for $900 or $700 and things of that nature. So that's the dilemma that we're in, but we could certainly take it back to committee and go back through it. But I think we've kind of looked at this and I think it comes, Ms. Gruel, I think Mr. Garcetti came up with the collection sheriff. And hopefully, we get that position to where we have somebody that's dedicated to collecting city revenues that's owed to us, is the position in which it goes across boundaries of every department and someone's fundamentally responsible for collecting revenue for the city. That may be the only way that we're going to be able to tackle this because it hurts to have a million dollars here and a million dollars there that we can't collect. At the same time, we're raising fees for other people that are more than willing to pay. So it's been a long journey and we've made a little progress, but not nearly as much as we would like to, but it still comes back, how much effort our department general managers putting into collecting fees that they basically are in charge of. And we've not been able to bridge that gap.
Well, I would just say two things and I acknowledge your points and very valid. We are in the process, as I mentioned, is moving forward, the centralization, and I think that will definitely help that situation. And secondly, you are right in the sense that collections is not always the core value or of primary importance to department general managers. So the proper onus and effort has to be put into that and it's got to be a critical part of what they do.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Briefly, not to beat this question up forever, are the credit agencies notified of the individuals that default on these payments?
Yes, 100% of the time, no, but that is a tool in this process, is that if they don't collect, there's a negative credit reporting placed on their credit file.
So we work with those three credit agencies, so they would have a negative mark on their credit?
That's correct.
And do we flag it within the city? So if they come back again for another process that they didn't pay the bill last time? Or have we been, shall we say, more than one time, an individual has not paid their debt to the city?
Currently, within departments, yes, but if you're talking about across the board so that other city departments are made aware of that, we don't have a mechanism to do that. But there is a new information system being developed right now that would allow us to do that.
So if they burn one department, the other departments will know?
Correct.
Currently, they can burn multiple departments and one doesn't know with the other one?
Because right now, we have 59 different systems, information systems, within 22 departments and unfortunately, they just don't talk to one another.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe our controller can fix that.
Ms. Gruel and then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, and I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but I still would like to refer that last piece, just to see where they're, when you, because colleagues, when you look at the list, Bob's Big Boy, Budget, Rent a Car, and a lot of these are individuals too, I mean, some of those are difficult to find, but there are companies in here, U.S. Dying Export, which owes us 19, almost $19,000 of that 1.7 million dollars. Different organizations that you see here, as to whether or not they're still operating in the city of Los Angeles. And the second question I have as looking at this, because when I see multiple years, if a company, and again, I know this, sorry, you are just happen to be the person sitting here, you are not any of the departments that actually are the ones that are part of that 1.37 million dollars. But if there is a company that has come in and owes us for year one and they don't pay us, normally, you don't get the services the next year. You know, if you don't pay your credit card bill, guess what? You don't get to use your credit card anymore. So I don't know where there are processes within the departments which say, if you did not pay your, whatever permit fee this may be or something else, you don't get it the second year. And so that's unclear when we see multiple years of various entities. L.A. Sightseeing Tours, five years it looks like that they have not paid us. And so that's why I'd like to, you know, Ms. Hahn had her motion, is refer that one piece. The other four items in here are actually those that the statute of limitations has passed, so we don't really have a whole lot of options there other than to write them off. But these other items, we need to hold the departments accountable to let us know and to say when they're referring them to a collection agency, if it needs to be, and I think Ms. Hahn said, just immediately go to a collection agency. Let's look at what our options are. And the collection sheriff that Eric and I introduced was, the whole idea was to have one person who was working with all of the departments to ensure that they were following not only the rules, but to look at common interests, because otherwise, the departments act independently of one another. So I go with my original request, if we could send back that first part of the report or the item that is before us, which is the item on the Office of Finance with the 722 accounts, have that go back to the committee. And I think you seconded that, is that correct, Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
And then, I'm sorry, just for clarification, so that's just recommendation number one that's on the committee report on the agenda, right? To go back to Budget and Finance? There's a list of A through H of departments. It looks like it is the Board of Public Works, LAPD, Transportation and Wreckin' Parks. So that would be D, E, F, G, and H.
Is that what?
That would be sent back to committee. The other items, I believe, A, B, C, and, A, B and C are actually those that the statute of limitations have gone.
It says that?
Thank you. No, it says in the, actually, the summary document in the actual report. It doesn't say it on the Budget and Finance Committee report. So thank you for asking that question.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I couldn't read that from the report, which ones, it just said a small percentage of these had passed their four-year statute of limitation, but that's certainly a problem and whether it's a sheriff or whether we have a policy shift in the city council where departments just immediately turn over their collections to collection agencies who, that's what they do for a living, is they know how to collect. Seems to me our departments try to exhaust it themselves and then they bump up against the four-year statute of limitations and then we've lost it. And again, you know, that word gets around, that if you don't pay your fines to the city of Los Angeles, wait four years and they'll write it off. So whatever it is we're doing, I think we need to do a better job. One of the things we might do, since it's going back to committee, DOT does have a contract with ACS for their parking citations and they're one of those large collection agencies, that their contract expires in March of 2011, but every March, there's a 90-day exac clause. So one of the things we might do when it comes back to committee is, could we add is, could we add, this is an amendment, that we take a look at the ACS contract. They do noticing, billing, and collecting. And just, it's a window. Otherwise, we lose the opportunity till 2011. Maybe we break off the collections part of it, and again, look to give that to some local firms in Los Angeles and see if they can do the job as well. Besides, as you said, this piece, looking to just, what do we have to lose to give it to a collection agency? And see what they can collect it. So, those are kind of two amendments, when it goes back to committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Without objection, then we'll take those as amended.
We're sending back, we're sending back everything that hasn't passed its statute.
The statute, correct. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 36, called special by Councilmember LeBonde.
And you wanted to take those together, Mr. LeBonde, 36 and 37? Or they separate items? Why don't I take up 36 first?
For Ms. Hahn.
For Ms. Hahn, item number 36.
36.
I think Mr. LeBonde called it special for you on the Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park.
Thank you. Can I, thank you. Can I have staff come up to the table on this item? Colleagues, I, I, this is one of these frustrating situations that I have been working on for probably over two years. And hopefully, we can get it resolved. But if any of you have any suggestions on how we might do things like this better in the future, I would welcome your input. The very first day labor site in the city of Los Angeles was in Harbor City almost 20 years ago, I believe. And it was the community coming together to work with the problem that plagues neighborhoods. Men who need to find work, need to find a day job to support their families. And always seems to cause some problems with neighborhoods. They want to make sure that it doesn't cause problems with traffic, it doesn't cause problems with loitering or nuisance. So, it was a very innovative solution to come together and form a day labor site. We had a trailer. It was very organized for, again, almost, almost 20 years. It was a decent, well-respected place for men to find work and for employers to hire. We also, men would work on their language skills. It was just a really smart center. What happened was, we had to widen that street to add a storm drain. And it was Vermont, right at the Harbor Regional Park in Harbor City. So, for two years, I've been trying to find another site to basically set up this trailer, where, again, employers could find somebody to hire, men who just wanted to get a good day's work and a decent pay could come to a safe location. We finally identified a piece of property, which was owned by Wreck and Parks. We identified a trailer to put on this site. And yet, we've experienced hurdle upon hurdle upon hurdle upon hurdle upon obstacle upon, "No, you can't do this," for so many reasons. Wreck and Parks has decided that this site needs to be tested for environmental problems. So, we couldn't find the money to do the testing. We've identified $48,000 in CDBG money to set up the trailer, to just provide electricity and water. That's all we're talking about. We're not building the Taj Mahal here. And yet, we were told that we really couldn't, we can't spend this money until the testing is done. And the testing can't start because we can't find money to do the testing. So, meanwhile, I've got people who are, you know, standing next to the site anyway. They're, you know, standing on the street. And we haven't provided what I want to do in this city. It's to have some respect and dignity, particularly in these tough, tough economic times for people who just want to get a good day's work. The most they're probably ever going to be there is in the morning. That's when most people get hired. So, we're talking about two or three hours at a site of the trailer with electricity, running water, a place for learning English and other classes. It's right next to Harbor College. It's right next to a golf course. It's right next to a swimming pool. And those entities are happening. And yet, this one little vacant piece of property, Recreation Parks has said that there could be some environmental issues there and have insisted that we test. So, I'm here to ask those of you at the table to explain to all of us what I think is a solution, and give us a timeline on when we believe this trailer, which is already on the site, we've already got a trailer there, folks, we just don't have the decent creature comforts that anyone would want to have standing out in the rain for the last few days, trying to get a job. So, can we do the testing? Where's the money going to come from? When can we reasonably believe we'll have electricity and water in the trailer? And when can I tell the neighborhood? And when can we tell, you know, the people who are still coming to the site that we have finally relocated? Again, we're just relocating this. We've had it for 20 years, just up the street, at the corner of the park. It's not been moved that far. And yet, it's been a very frustrating experience for me to think that the second-largest city in the country can't provide a little trailer with a little electricity and a little water just to give people who are trying to support their families a little respect and dignity in this very cruel world.
I'm Sharon Morris with CDD. And in the, the item that's before you today, we have identified the money to prepare the site and some operations funding for the nonprofit that's operating the center. As you've indicated, Councilwoman, the issue is around the Phase 2 testing and the fact that the Wreck and Parks has informed us that this is a former, this site was formerly used for oil drilling activities. We don't know the extent of what, if any, contamination is on the site. And it becomes a liability issue to have anyone using the site until we've done that testing. Originally, we identified that we would use Brownfields' dollars. Dan Wiseman is here from the CRA. He can tell us where that contract is at this time. And absent, absent the ability to use that funding, then we're recommending a, an amendment today to allow us to use the money that's in the, in the transmittal today to, to begin that process and be reimbursed by Brownfields. But perhaps you'd like to hear from Mr. Wiseman. And then, Michael Cole from CDD is also here with us, and he can give us a timeframe for what happens once the money is in place. The status of the Brownfields' contract?
I'm Dan Wiseman. I'm a senior civil engineer with the Community Redevelopment Agency. And we already have, the Brownfields' money has already been allocated by council, and it's allocated to CDD. And to actually use that money, it is required the CRA enter an agreement with CDD. We have, we are working on that agreement now. It's now currently being reviewed by both our city attorneys. And once they sign off on it, we will be able to execute that agreement, transfer money to CRA, and proceed with projects.
So, it's legal for them to use this 48,000 CDBG money, or up to, up to 20,000 of it, for the testing? The Brownfield money can reimburse them? That's legal, we think? Or that's what you're proposing?
I, I'm not sure of how that would exactly work. I would have to check on that. It is possible, I think, but it would be something.
Well, that's what we're proposing today. Oh, my God, I can't handle this. I can't handle this.
I, I believe it should be okay. I believe there'll be a way to work that out.
Do you want to add to this?
Sure. Michael Cole, CDD. If we, if the, if we, if we change the motion today and we set aside $20,000 for testing, I just got off the phone with the BOE, Bureau of Engineering. They can test for us. They can perform the Phase 2 test. If this goes through today, and we set aside up to $20,000 for that testing, they said that they can get, within three weeks, they can get someone out there to test. It takes three weeks approximately for them to get the money in cumbre, to do what they need to do to get an inspector out.
Oh, my God, I, I want this, if we approve this today, who's ever listening, be out there on the site this afternoon, test it, get back with the results, and let's move forward on putting a temporary trailer on a vacant lot so men can have a decent place to get a job. Do you hear that? I, I tell you, colleagues, I've had it. I've had it. The bureaucracy strangling this effort is, is beyond belief. And in a city that's got a lot bigger problems to deal with, that we cannot figure out how to sign an agreement between CRA and CDD when we already have Brownfield money appropriated, that we have approved, I want somebody on that site this afternoon testing it. These men are standing right now on the street, and they're probably getting a lot more contamination by diesel fumes than they would standing on this property for a couple hours in the morning. We're not building the Taj Mahal. Please, people, work with me.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. There's no further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, do we need to open the?
On the follow-up, just for me, how can we solve that problem? How can we solve the problem? I mean, I hear the passion of the Councilwoman. Could someone go out there? Any of you three going to go out there today?
It's the Bureau of Engineering that has to do that.
Okay, or is it General Services or Bureau of Engineering? Who does the drilling?
It's General, it's Bureau of Engineering.
Okay, so who's going to call Gary Lee Moore? Okay, so, and if you email him as well.
We will do that.
You know, it's real important for our colleague of the 50th District to find this simple solution to this area here. And how soon does this come back to council? Do you want to hold it for a day or two, and come back in a week?
Today, colleagues, apparently, I need to amend this report and allow them to spend the CDBG money on testing. So, if you could, if you agree to that amendment, but you're right, then Gary, Gary, and I think Gary will work with me on this, to get testing out there.
So, the vote today is to amend, a vote on the report is amended?
Yes.
All right. You ready?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to offer one suggestion, that periodic reports come to one of your lead deputies so that you see the progress. Otherwise, it's going to float away again.
Oh, no, we, we're on this.
So, if you can just a timely report back, that would be a directive. At least, it would be on the record that you need the report back. And it just keeps it close to, to your office.
Oh, yeah, no, we, we're working with this closely. I, I just wanted this to be public, so that you could all feel my pain. And, well, you know, I'll take a report back in, you know,
One week?
One week, on the progress of the testing.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weisar?
I was sitting here biting my lip because I think many of us councilmembers have gone through this. And yes, you said it right, Ms. Hahn, I feel your pain. But I couldn't let this conversation go without mentioning that every Angelino, whether they're workers, professionals, deserve dignity and respect. What Ms. Hahn is trying to do is not pass by these individuals each day, see them in the deplorable conditions they are in, and think it's not a problem. This had been, had been, should have been stopped yesterday. Every Angelino, no matter what race or background, deserves respect and dignity. And Ms. Hahn, I applaud you for doing something about it. And sometimes, bureaucracy can get in the way. I feel, we all feel your pain, but this should have been done yesterday.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Just a sidebar comment. You know, we got a Home Depot in my district, and it has day laborers there. And we've had several meetings with Home Depot and with the community groups. And dignity and respect is number one. And we've been taking a leadership role with that. And I want to applaud Home Depot and the Delray Neighborhood Council that's worked closely with my office and with the folks who are day laborers. There's three things to consider. One is a customer coming into the store not being harassed and overwhelmed. Two, a store not being overly inundated from a commercial standpoint. And three, the dignity of the day laborer. And the dignity of the day laborer is number one, as far as I'm concerned. Dignity of every individual is number one. But I just want to say, we have a work in progress with Home Depot. It's going well. Because we all sat at the table, and my opening line, Ms. Hahn, was, "These people need to be treated with respect and dignity, period." Now, how do we make that all happen? So, I'm, I'm hopeful that Ms. Hahn will find that issue resolved in the same kind of way as we did in the 11th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, no further speakers in the queue. So, we will vote on this item as amended. So, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We'll send that forth with, without objection. And last item, please.
Is item number 37, and that, I believe, was also called special for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item 37?
Yes, do I have staff here from the Harvard Department? Don't worry, I'm not going to be as upset with you. I have been in the past, but not today. Margie, Margie Hernandez, are you, here, come.
Good cop, bad cop. I got good cop.
Hi, Margie. Actually, I'm actually very glad you're here, and you can speak to this item. Colleagues, this was just an item that came up in TCT, and it was an agreement between the, the Harvard Department and Meriwether and Williams Insurance Services to help the city, actually, all three proprietary departments have contracted with this group to help with administering the city's bond assistance program, which helps small, medium-sized, women-owned, minority businesses participate and get some of the contracts that DWP, Airport, and Harvard Department are, are letting. It came to my attention that since this was in place a year ago, the Harvard Department had not been able to really use it and give any small, minority, woman-owned business a piece of the pie at the Harvard Department. And we know that in these tough times, our economic stimulus packages are actually at the Harvard Department, are at the airport. It's a great place where we're going to be doing some capital improvement projects. We're going to be creating jobs. And so, I was a little dismayed that the Harvard Department had not figured out how to really connect to this program and make it work for businesses that would love to get maybe just a small piece of a contract at the Harvard Department. So, that's why it's here. And I was very excited to talk to Margie recently to find out that the Harvard Department has actually made her the point person on figuring out how to make this work. So, maybe you can just speak to us briefly about how you're, what your idea is.
Okay, thank you, Janice. I'm Margaret Hernandez, Director of Contracts and Purchasing at the Port of Los Angeles. And I have been tasked with responding to Councilmember Hahn's questions with regard to the bond assistance program. And I think one of the things we'd like to point out is that we have had some small businesses be successful on our construction jobs. Though, those are probably the more established, larger, small businesses, so to speak. And I believe that, as a result of the questions that were asked in committee, there is a renewed effort on the part of our construction and engineering staff to break those large contracts even down smaller than what they are. And so, we have also embarked on a program to educate those small business contractors. We have what is called a STEP Academy for Construction Contractors. STEP means Success Through Education at the Port. So, we are actively working with these small contractors to get them ready to bid on our projects. And we are hoping that by breaking up the contracts, making them smaller, creating pieces that can easily be handled by smaller contractors, we will be successful in having more participation. And I think this is very important, especially in these economic times. And I, and I want to just acknowledge that Meriwether-Williams is a strong partner of ours in this effort to make this happen.
Good, that's a perfect answer. And it's always music to our ears that certain questions that we may have posed in a committee actually spurs a department into getting a renewed effort in doing what I think is, is really at the, at the spirit of what we want to be as a city, is making sure we can empower businesses. want to be as a city, is making sure we can empower businesses, particularly in these tough times, to be able to get a piece of the, the business, particularly at the Harvard Department. So I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to working with you on that. And I love the idea about really reaching out and educating, because I still think in terms of the international trade industry and the Harvard Department and the Port of Los Angeles, we've got a lot of businesses in the city of Los Angeles that really should be able to connect to that industry. I know times are slow, cargo is down, and yet, even so, we're the number-one port in the country, and international trade industry is not going to go anywhere. And it's a place where I think we can help businesses, particularly the small ones, get into it. So I really appreciate you coming today, Margie, Margaret, and I want to help work with you. But thank you. Perfect answers.
Thank you.
You made me happy.
Mr. Weezer.
Glad to see you. I like the happy Janice. Thank you, Janice. Well, thank you. I have a good question. Today in audits and government efficiency, we have several items to get updates on the Controller's Report on Contracting in the City of Los Angeles. Also, we hope to hear an update on the Mayor's Task Force looking at contracts. You know, we spend about $1.5 billion on contracts each and every year, and so hopefully, if we are more efficient in the way we do this, we could realize some savings and get better service, and hopefully contract locally. Have you been working with the Task Force, the Mayor's Task Force? And secondly, did you see the Controller's Report? Any thoughts on that?
Yes. Yes, to both. We actually had our own Controller's Audit on the Harvard Department with regard to our contracting efforts, and my staff is working on that, on those recommendations that were made. And so we have two kind of tasks before us. One is to improve the contracting within the department, streamline it, make it as easy as possible, make sure that everyone understands what their responsibilities are with regard to the city rules and policies. And then, on the, on the other hand, making sure that those businesses who want to be a part of our contracting opportunities have that ability to do that and are ready to step forward and, and be successful at getting contracts. So yes, we are working on both those fronts to do that.
And so I, I'm not sure if I missed this in your presentation. Do you have a local hiring goal, local, small business goal within the department?
I believe-
And if you, whatever work you're doing, that, are you coordinating with a larger city policy, or do you have your own internal goals?
I know our construction division and Mike Christiansen, who is planning to be here, are working on the project labor agreements, and I believe all of those agreements have a local hire component to them. And yes, those will be part of our contracts. Though, the ones we break out and make smaller may not be as amenable to that project labor agreement, because it's somewhat more difficult for smaller businesses to comply with all of those requirements. However, they would be small, local, within-the-city-type businesses that we would want to.
Was there a representative on the Mayor's Task Force from the harbor?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. Next order of business.
And that clears the desk.
All right. Any announcements, colleagues? No announcements? Do we have adjourned motions today? Okay. If I can ask everybody, please rise for adjourned motions. Now's the time when we adjourn council in memory of those who have passed. Ask everybody to please rise. And with that, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Rita Rual Garden, who passed away on Tuesday, February the 10th, at the St. John of God Care Center in Los Angeles. She was passed away at the age of 94. She was the eldest of six children, born in 1914 in New Orleans. She did a primary schooling in New Orleans. In 32, she was, she, in 1936, was married, ended up with three children, Anthony, Rosella, and Sandra. During World War II, she was a stay-home mom while her husband worked in a variety of defense plants across the country. In 1945, she relocated in Los Angeles in the Jefferson Park area. She went to work as a seamstress, helped provide financial resources for the family. In her leisure time, she made clothes for the family, also window coverings, decorative items. She and her husband became active members of the Holy Name of Jesus Christ Church on Jefferson, in which she made all the liturgy banners for the church. She was an active member in a variety of organizations, the Marriage Encounter, the Charismatic Prayer Group. She also was given one of the highest awards by Pope John Paul II. In 1995, she received the Benny Marenti Medal. She was also a photographer or cook, and she was affectionately known while at the care center as Mama Rita. She is survived by her three children and a host of other relatives, and the family asked that in lieu of flowers, that donations be made to the Holy Name of Jesus Catholic Church on Jefferson Boulevard.
Ms. Rual.
Thank you. Mr. Zine, I'd ask that we adjourn in the memory of Zalida Roa, who passed away on February 3rd. She is the mother of Ella Vallejo, who works in the Office of Finance and who I worked with during the Bradley administration. She was born on September 20th, 1927, in Havana, Cuba, to Manuel Beryl and Carmen Suarez. She is survived by her three daughters, four sisters, three grandchildren, and her pride and joy, her eight great-grandchildren, and numerous friends and family. She married Hector Manuel Rao and had a marriage full of respect, happiness, and love. They had three daughters, Zalida, Concepcion, and Ella. Zalida loved life, music, baseball, reading, and discussing politics. Two of her most proud and happiest days were when she became a U.S. citizen and when she voted on her first presidential election. She was very passionate about sports. Two of her favorite sports were baseball and boxing. Once baseball season started, she was in front of the television watching the games. She knew the players and the goings-on with each of the team members. She loved to go to Dodger Stadium and participate fully in the fun, including cheering and occasionally telling them in explicit language what they did wrong. She also enjoyed going to her grandson's and later on to her great-grandson's baseball games, and she was extraordinarily proud of them. And she would play with them and actually teach them how to bat and to throw a ball. In addition to sports, music was a very big part of her life, and she loved to dance. In addition, religion was a very important part of her life, and her faith was strong, and it got her through many of her life's experiences. She was a wonderful woman, and I know all of her family and friends. I will miss her. Again, she's survived by Zalida Concepcion and my friend Ellen. I ask that we all adjourn in her memory.
All council members. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I adjourn today's city council meeting in memory of John Martin Polakovic, former Los Angeles Police Department officer who served the nation and the people of California with honor throughout a career that spanned half a century in public safety and jurisprudence. He died in his sleep at his house in Hisbury, California, in San Bernardino County on Sunday, Sunday, February 8th. A second son of peasant immigrants from Czechoslovakia, John was born in Chicago, Illinois, on April 15th, 1936, the third of three children. From 1954 to 1957, he served in the U.S. Army 11th Airborne Division as a paratrooper based in Germany poised to keep the Soviet Union at bay during the early years of the Cold War. He later returned to Chicago, moved to Idaho to join the Boise Police Department, and then to Baldwin Park, California, in 1959, when he was hired by Los Angeles Police Department. As a peace officer, he worked traffic and street patrol and was based in Rampart, South Central, and Parker Center. He was on the front lines in the streets of Valley during the Watts riots in 1965. Later, he reached the rank of sergeant and worked administrative vice and intelligence and investigative unit former Chief William Parker created to route corrupt government officials and gangsters from Los Angeles. He was a key member of the LAPD team tasked with implementing the landmark Miranda case in 1966, which granted suspects the rights and attorney during interrogation. In love with the law, he spent evenings attending night classes at a tiny law school above a Maria Callender's restaurant in West Covina. He's one of the few, just, he's one of the, he's one of just three students of 90 in the class to pass the state bar exam on the first attempt. In 1970, he launched a private practice law firm specializing in criminal defense. He spent nearly 40 years as a trial attorney, working capital murder cases and other criminal defense matters. In this capacity, his career changed from throwing suspects in jail to defending the rights of the accused. A champion of the underdog, had experienced his family's struggle to succeed. While he loved his country, he realized tremendous imbalance and power between big government and an ordinary citizen. He wasn't busy being a cop or attorney. He enjoyed golf, nature photography, and smoking big cigars. He is survived by his two sons, Gary and Ray, who lived in mature county, and Seattle, respectively; his sister Millie and brother Fred; three grandchildren, Candace, Ashley, and Neil; and two great-grandsons, Caleb and Adon. Thank you.
All members on that. I have one adjourned motion. Badiya Eloise Nicholas Nasor, passed away February 12th at the age of 101. Effectively known as Bee, was a native of California, received her Bachelor of Arts degree from University of Redlands, California Teaching Certificate, did postgraduate work at University of Mexico, and obtained her Master's Degree at Columbia University. Bee was a world traveler and taught school for a couple of years before meeting her late husband, William Edward Nasor, with whom she had three children. In her lifetime, Bee focused on philanthropic activities, serving as a member of the National Charity League, president of Gold Diggers of the Crippled Children's Society, president of the Belair Guild of Children's Hospital, president of Lifelighters for the Exceptional Children's Foundation, and member of the Los Angeles Beautiful Board of Directors, and as a support group member of the House Ear Institute. As advisory board member of the Los Angeles Philanthropic Foundation, she served as chairman of the annual awards dinner for 45 years. Membership also included Los Angeles County Museum of Art, Presbyterian Church of Hollywood, Republican Party, and the California Scholarship Federation, also listed in Who's Who of American Women. Wrote and directed four educational plays for children. Her hobbies included traveling, golf, art sketching, painting, creative original recipes, writing, collecting antiques, and most of all, helping to make Los Angeles Philanthropic Foundation activities highly successful. She is survived by three children, five grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. May she rest in peace. This concludes the meeting. Please call the roll. Thank you. We are now adjourned.